Welcome to work. First, we will do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, servicemen, and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega. Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor President Winslow.
Here. So I am planning to use my discretion. We do have an executive session scheduled. We are going to push that until after we do the public comment, and then the discussion of Papers 30124 and 2724, unless anybody has an objection of that. So we will go into public comments. And just to let people know, we have 21 people signed up, I believe, unless that one's crossed up.
Nope, there's another name there. It looks like it's been replaced.
All right, so we have 21 people signed up. I will use my discretion so that all 21 folks can speak. It looks like they're all Malden residents. And then, everybody will have two minutes to speak. Come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record. You'll get your two minutes starting at that point. And then, with 15 seconds left, I just want to make clear, I will raise this, and people will have 15 seconds to close up, after which I will bang the gavel to ask you to please let the next person come up to speak. And, all right? So clerk, let's take, I think, just take the first person.
Ahmad Zahid.
Ahmad Zahid, please come to the podium. Oh, see, one second. Sorry about that, all right? Your time hasn't started yet, so, all right, go ahead. Okay, okay. All right, your mic is on, sorry about that.
My mic is on? Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ahmad Zahid. I live at 40 Cedar Street in Malden. A diverse group of community members came to you in good faith, asking for a simple and straightforward ceasefire resolution. Instead, the city council came up with a resolution that is extremely biased, unjust, and falls far short from a ceasefire resolution, even though many counselors publicly stated that they received more comments in favor of the original resolution. We met with you, informed you of the serious humanitarian crisis in Gaza, as a horrific genocide is happening, and shared with you the atrocities the Palestinian people have been suffering for the last 75 years, under Israeli apartheid, murder, persecution, cruel oppression, and occupation. Some of the language that is really biased and unbelievable. For example, recognizing the grief and suffering from the October civilian attacks, while unjustly ignoring 75 years of grief and suffering the Palestinian people have been through. Seventy-five years, not one day. The urgent humanitarian crisis in Gaza, for God's sake, it sounds like it's an earthquake, it's like a natural disaster, failing to mention that it is a genocide. All human rights organizations declared it as a genocide and crimes against humanity. The city council supports the work of President Biden to broker. That's far from, that's not a resolution, that's not a ceasefire resolution. A ceasefire resolution should come from the city to help against racism, hate, harassment, and bullying of our children in public schools.
Okay.
The city council stands in allyship with our...
Sir, it's been two minutes, so your time is up, sorry.
Can I finish?
No, your time is up, sorry. Great, all right, thank you.
Mark Bernstein.
All right. Mark Bernstein.
Thank you. I'm Mark Bernstein, 24 Chestnut Street, 43. I'm a software designer and computer scientist. You were elected to repair potholes and remodel parks, and you are now asked to debate the future of the Jewish homeland and to repair the Nakka. You ought to have declined, and you still can. You say, in the proposition, "We're a welcoming community." Part of Malden's strong past is that it welcomed one of the world's leading centers for Holocaust denial for decades. You affirm your commitment to people of all faith backgrounds. Judaism is not a faith background. Faith is irrelevant. If you are born a Jew, you will die a Jew. No sociological proposition has been subjected to more empirical testing than that. Your false equivalence is ignorant as well as Republican. You speak of this question having two sides. That's nuts. The question has many sides. If you can't name six off the top of your head, you don't know nothing. You say you value life, yet the mob outside your window on June 4th was chanting for death. You did not object to the blood libel, inside the chamber or out. Even now, you remain silent in the face of atrocity and complacency that calls for the deportation and even the murder of millions. You say you've chosen some guy to represent Malden Jews and to negotiate. Israel was created...
Fifteen seconds.
...to end bigoted nonsense like that. Your council president combined two anti-Semitic tropes in one banal remark. You are out of your depth, you are putting people in danger, and you've thrown away the trust I gave to you in my folly. Stop pretending to deplore bigotry while you smile and while this mob sharpens its knives.
All right, thank you. Next? Islam Ali? Islam Ali? Okay. Note that Counselor Seminelli has arrived.
I did.
All right, thanks. All right. State your name and, for the record, address for the record.
Good afternoon. This is Islam Ali. I live in 190 Mountain Avenue, Malden. Whether you believe it or not, this life is literally a test to see who is worthy of heaven and who is worthy of hell. There are deeds that are connected to each place that will each earn, will earn a person their destination forever. At this moment, you are literally being tested with your power and responsibilities, and you will absolutely pay consequences for how, where, and when you use them. God says, "Beware a day when you shall return to your Lord, and every soul shall be paid in full what it has earned, whether it be in good or evil it has done, and none shall be wrong." Islam teaches us to condemn any innocent killings regardless of what religion and faith are followed, but we can all agree that this teaching is universal. God forbid, if you don't change the narrative and give residents support and uplift the truth, is when you start hearing about attempts of taking lives of innocent Palestinian-American children, just like the three-year-old in Texas we heard about over the weekend. Please, don't let those over influence your decisions as humans. Don't follow an agenda given to you just to keep your jobs or to carry out the plans of those evil doers, because as said, there will come a day everybody will be questioned about their times, about the times they could have made a change or tried to, for the least. And I hope you can all change, you can all be the change you once aspire to be. Malden has been my home for the last 25 years. I went to Malden High School, and one thing I loved about my city is that it was one of the most diverse in the state. It shaped me to become the man who I am today. And as a resident here, I do feel, I do feel a sense of responsibility. All of us are in this life together, one take, no redos, and days like these are ones that we pray for, to try and use our voice and power to try and change the world for the better. And if that's too big, let's start with our city.
All right, time, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan...
I just want to read a phone number before and at the end of my speech. International calling code 970-599-373-765. I want to thank each and every member of this council for hearing my words two weeks ago. I look at this new resolution, and despite concerns that we have, you addressed each and every one of the things that I spoke to. It condemns violence against women. It condemns the terrorist attack. It supports our government's work to negotiate a ceasefire. Our President of the United States. These are all good things. What's not a good thing is the reason we have state laws on the books that prevent such a resolution being brought in a city hall in the first place. It's bringing bigotry, threats, stress, it's bringing the problems to our city that entire governments are trying to negotiate. Since, in the past two weeks, without people knowing any idea of me speaking in this chamber, I've had four different occasions when someone has seen my yarmulke in a place in a storefront and demanded to know if I'm a Zionist. Four times. Yes, I do believe that Jews have the right to self-determination in our native homeland, Israel. Period. That's the definition. Now, I know for a fact I'm not isolated in people trying to bully me over this specific resolution, but I will say, if someone really wants to advocate for a ceasefire, I reached out to my friends in the Israeli intelligence community. I have Yaya Sinwar's cell phone number. If anybody wants to call him and advocate for a ceasefire, talk to the man who's been saying no for eight months in a row. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I live at 27 Stanton Street. I'm a queer, disabled woman and a transplant to Malden. In 2012, I deployed to Afghanistan. I slept under an airstrip where F-16s deployed their antimissile flak when they flew through the radar beams of the equipment I helped deploy. I am familiar with the sound of war, and what is happening in Gaza is not war, it is genocide. On October 7th, Hamas fighters escaped from Gaza, which Israel had turned into a concentration camp, and attacked, killing 1,200. Israel responded immediately, killing at least 14 Israelis and numerous Hamas fighters, and have been killing Palestinians every day since. Since that day, deadly and disabling attacks have been on the rise on Palestinian-Americans. October 14th, a six-year-old Palestinian-American was killed by his landlord. On November 25th, three Palestinian college students were attacked in Burlington, Vermont. Just over the weekend, in Texas, a woman attempted to drown two young Palestinian children, ages three and six. The loss of innocent Palestinian lives aren't limited to inside of Gaza, and a clear declaration of an immediate ceasefire and an end to all violence should not be limited to Gaza either. From Gaza to Malden City Council chambers tonight, we have a powder keg of tension and bigotry. This council has a responsibility to protect this community with words and actions.
As a matter of decorum, I ask people that your signs be no higher than your chin, please, all right?
Yale Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Yale Robinson. I live at 22 Barlet Street. Thank you, councilors, for your service to our community. I respectfully urge you to vote no on the resolution today before you, calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, because it takes a narrow, one-sided view of the longstanding conflict between Israel and its Arab neighbors. There is a city on the coast of northern Israel called Nahariya. Nahariya, like Malden, has a population of about 65,000 people, and Nahariya, like Malden, has a central train station that serves commuters who travel south for work. On September 9, 2001, a Hamas suicide bomber attacked the train station, murdered three Israeli men, and injured 94 people. And today, Nahariya is under attack again. It sits just six miles south of Israel's northern border with Lebanon, and in Lebanon, the Hezbollah terrorist group has been firing rockets and drones with explosives at the direction of Nahariya and Kiryat Shmona and other cities in northern Israel. More than 50,000 people in northern Israel, and to be fair, a similar number in southern Lebanon, have fled the fighting and are sheltering in hotels temporarily and in bomb shelters. I stand here today in solidarity with my brothers and sisters in Israel. They deserve the same peaceful life that we take for granted here in Malden, and the resolution before you does nothing to help them. Ask yourself, does a ceasefire in Gaza suffice, or should there also be a ceasefire in northern Israel and throughout Israel? And if you can't answer that question, you need to vote no. Thank you.
I live at 64 Essex Street here in Malden. Over the past few weeks, we've lost ourselves in the navigation of proper procedure, negotiating precise language, so that calling for the cessation of the slaughter of innocent civilians, women and children mostly, doesn't offend anyone's delicate sensibilities, and the confrontation of the soullessness of political expediency. I'd like to simplify it and bring this back to what's really at stake. Standing next to me here are Aness and Acer. On January 2nd, their lives were destroyed by an American-funded bomb. They both are walking miracles. They almost lost their entire family that day, and last week, we hosted them for Eid at our home. As they played, Acer began to remember their family holidays, which caused Aness to cry with his grief. While I held Aness in my arms as he cried for his father, his mother, and his lost siblings, as his frail body shook, my heart shattered, right here in Malden, in my own backyard. This is not an issue that we can bury our heads in the sand on, and it's not some distant conflict that doesn't touch our community. And any other ceasefire, we don't have a hand in. This is American-funded, not Hezbollah. This is not a complicated matter. Do you or do you not support the slaughter and infliction of immense suffering on innocents? Do you or do you not support a genocide? Will whatever you decide anger some and have potential unpleasant consequences for you? Absolutely. Damned if you do and damned if you don't. Not an enviable position to be in, but it's one you sought. So now it's time to decide what will you vote for, and will it be worth it and able for you to sleep at night? I'll close with this: One of our most inspiring presidents, whose life was...
Time. Time's up. 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 Matthew Garland.
I'm Matthew Garland, Executive Director of Congregation Beth Israel. I live at 108 Hawthorne Street. You know, most of us don't want anything to do with politics. We just want to live quiet lives. And so we have a lot of gratitude for you, who step forward to administer and care for our city. But that gratitude comes with a great deal of trust. Trust that you will act in good faith, trust that you will not squander our city's precious resources, our funds, and your time and energies. At the last council meeting, during the budget discussion, Counselor McDonald mentioned that you're going to need to come up with some very creative ways to raise revenue to avoid future cuts. That is what you need to be focusing your energies on. That is what the residents of Malden need you to be doing, not dealing with international issues. You open up a Pandora's Box of subjecting yourself to wasting more time and more resources dealing with other international conflicts if you vote yes on this. So please, protect yourselves, protect the residents of Malden from future waste, and vote no. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading the handwriting. Colleen Mitchnech? I apologize.
I'm Colleen Mitchnech, 290 Clifton Street. As President of two different Jewish nonprofits, I feel an obligation to speak today. The role of Malden City Council is to protect Malden and not engage in international affairs. Why is this the only issue that ignites such passion when numerous other global crises demand attention? Are you addressing the following humanitarian disasters with the same urgency? Myanmar, where over 700,000 Muslims have been massacred, raped, and displaced by the Buddhist military; in China, where a million Muslim Uighurs are placed in detention camps, subjected to forced labor and sterilization; Sudan, where our Muslims slaughtered 2.5 million and enslaved 200,000 black Sudanese Christians. These crises describe targeting of innocents perpetrated by Buddhists, Chinese, and Muslims. In response to these crises, it would be absurd to justify harassment and violence towards Buddhist, Chinese, or Muslim Americans. Unlike these crises, the Israeli conflict is a defensive war that Hamas thrust on Israel on October 7th, murdering 1,200 civilians and taking hundreds of hostages. Under international law, Israel has a duty and right to protect its citizens and defeat Hamas and rescue hostages. Hamas admits to borrowing itself and civilian population to increase civilian deaths. Does this council realize that when America fights terrorists, they accidentally kill 4 to 60 civilians per terrorist eliminated? Israel's ratio is 1 to 1. These ceasefire resolutions are part of a global agenda to delegitimize and destroy the only Jewish state and justify harassment and violence towards Jews in the US and around the world. Listen to the chants, "From the river to the sea, long live the Intifada." The Hamas Charter states, "The day of judgment will not come about until Muslims fight Jews and kill them." Their hate has no boundaries. If you think they stop at targeting Jews, listen carefully to the rest of their chants, like "Death to America." You are being given a grave responsibility to choose hate and lies or truth and morality. If you want this war to end, do not call for an Israeli ceasefire which allows Hamas to rearm.
Time.
Instead, call for mass. Time. Time. Time's up. 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 Time's up.
My name is Adam Lampert. I live at 126 West Street.
Yeah.
Counselors, in the two weeks since this topic was last discussed, there has been yet another ceasefire deal proposed by the UN, agreed to by Israel, and rejected by Hamas. It's absurd to expect local city politics to solve international affairs in the events of the past two weeks' highlights, that not only is it way out of the purview of this council, but there are already people whose job it is and are working on it while we debate language. When Counselor Colin Hayes brought this resolution forward, we were told it wasn't an effort to make Malden residents feel more safe. The other reason left unstated is to put upwards pressure on our Congress representative, Catherine Clark, and hope she, in turn, pushes for the same goals. But would that show our Congresswoman what the constituents actually want? Had the Jewish community not been reached out to by Counselor Colin Hayes, this resolution may have passed in its original form, as we were otherwise unaware of what was going on. Thank you, Counselor Colin Hayes, for showing us what it looks like when everyone can let their voices be heard. Look at how far we have already come on this resolution. Our neighboring cities would have benefited from someone like you on their city councils to prevent these other ceasefire resolutions being passed silently. I don't believe this is any place in local city government, and I hope the council sees this as well. If anyone would like to reach out to our congressional representatives, please do not let this council stand in your way. You do not need permission from this group to do so. Counselors, vote no on this resolution and let this council resume working on things it should. I'd rather be up here offering ideas to help the city generate revenue, but instead, this is taking up precious council time. Currently, there is no precedent for the city to make international resolutions. If you choose to change that precedence, please consider focusing on resolutions for Russia and Ukraine, Myanmar, Ethiopia, Iran, Afghanistan, Mexico, Yemen, Congo, Pakistan, Haiti, and many more places. I'd keep listening if my time were less limited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time. Time's up. 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 Time's up.
My name is Dia Shueki. I live on 12 Cory Lane, Malden. When and how many? When and how many? Tell me. When and how many? When will it be time to call for a ceasefire? After another six months? Another year? How many more lives does the City of Malden City Council need before they are ready to call for a ceasefire? Today, I am ashamed. I grew up in Malden, playing on the Linden School playground. I went to Malden High, my high school team, for soccer. We dyed our hair blue. We dyed our hair yellow when we went to the state cup. our hair yellow when we went to the State Cup. After graduating college as a civil engineer, I came back to Malden to live here because I love this city. I love Malden. I love the diversity. I love the community here. And that's why I love being a Malden resident. But today, I am ashamed after I see all the neighboring towns like Melrose, Somerville, Cambridge, and Boston, all already passed this resolution, but yet we're still avoiding and cowardying away. But the City of Malden has has yet to wake up. I remember being a junior in high school in my modern world history class, learning about genocide and about the Holocaust. We learned about the 10 steps that lead to genocide, from classification, propaganda, dehumanization, and denial, as you see it right in front of us. But it seems, you know, it seems like the Holocaust somehow happened in Cairo or happened in Jerusalem. The world said, "Never again," but here we are again. After the last city council meeting, I was left wondering, how could you all allow this? How could you sleep at night knowing you stood up against peace? But I was wrong. I realized you guys were all right because we don't deserve rights. We don't deserve rights. I will leave the rest of my time, and I won't have enough time to show my sarcasm, but I had a lot of sarcasm to show.
All right, time, right?
Ken Alper.
What do I, and you need a name? Ken Alper?
And address, thank you.
69 Sprague Street, Malden. Counselors and fellow citizens, my name is Ken Alper. Malden is my home for over 25 years. I'm Jewish, bar mitzvahed, confirmed, union man, work for democracy and justice. I am here to support immediate, permanent ceasefire in Gaza as to overwhelmingly correct humanitarian position. Malden needs a ceasefire resolution for Malden to possibly lead some help, lend some help in stopping the killing, but more importantly, to let Maldonians know this city supports a ceasefire independent of any other efforts. Many of you are concerned about the safety of your children in school and the dangers of divisiveness.
All right, please address the council, please.
And the dangers of divisiveness in our community, I want to point out that opposing a ceasefire resolution stands your reality on its head and supports the very things that you fear and are concerned about. Failure to support a ceasefire resolution for Gaza in the face and killing and maiming of over 120,000 people implicitly says Palestinians are second-class citizens. Their lives are not as important. Do not count. This prejudice, belief that some human beings are better than others, creates divisions, tensions, and increases the probability of violence. Remember, a few years ago, COVID was blamed on China. Soon, there were many attacks on Asian people, the worst being the horrific gunning down of eight Asian salon workers in Atlanta. Malden City took action, immediately making statements protecting Malden's Asian community. Why has Malden not done this for her Arab community? So, councilors, I urge you to stand up for what is clearly humanitarian, moral, and best for Malden. With latest polls showing support for a ceasefire by over 70% of the United States population as the publicly elected leaders of Malden, I implore you to stop tailing your citizens and start leading them. Forward to a better Malden by voting for a permanent ceasefire resolution now.
Time.
Just a ceasefire resolution recognizing humanity.
Marsha Manong.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Manong. I live at 296 Bryant Street. Well, here we are again debating whether Malden City Council should resolve to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. Let me share some inconvenient truths about the humanitarian devastation happening in Gaza. According to the United Nations, 15,000 children have been killed during this Israel-Hamas war. 21,000 children are missing or have been separated from their families. 50,000 children need urgent medical treatment for severe malnutrition. 37,626 human beings have been killed and 86,000 have been injured. My question to you as Malden City councilors, as human beings, is it enough yet? Have enough men, women, and children died to quench this insatiable thirst for blood? Do we need to see piles of bodies stacked high before we say enough? Have we become so used to war that death becomes normalized? Hunger, death, homelessness, environmental catastrophes such as air and water pollution are the ways of life in Gaza. Yet Netanyahu continues to block aid from reaching Palestinians in Gaza. There is no justification for what is happening. While we sit and debate if our wording is correct and not offensive to anyone, I am offended by this heartless genocide playing out in Gaza. If you can't vote for a ceasefire, you certainly don't represent me as a resident of Malden and a member of the human race. History will judge us all. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mansoor Wafali.
Assalamu alaikum, peace upon you all. We all are brothers and sisters in humanity.
What was your address, Mansoor?
We all look at each other. My name is Mansoor Wafali. I have 410 Highland Avenue, Malden Street.
Thank you very much.
We all are sisters and brothers in humanity. We have different thinking. We can look. I look at behind you, and you look what's in behind me. So we have differences in colors, in tongues, in opinions, and that's how we grew up. We have colors, black and whites. But what joins us all as together is being humane. And what's humane is humane for every single person. I see on the other side also, they have carrying pictures of babies being killed or being kidnapped. We have more, almost more than 15,000 children were massacred. So it's clear, the picture is clear. Plus, our government, Biden Initiative, is ceasefire. Why don't we follow that? That's number one. I thought even for if we have a divestment, we should go for divestment. We can disagree on anything, but we have to ceasefire. You have to all support the ceasefire because your president initiative is beginning of a ceasefire, killing innocent people, and it is not a war. They are killing innocent people. We have, they have no chance for survival. It is, for all of you, when you die, you're gonna face one thing, one judge, and that's the superior judge. We call it Allah. They call it Allahuini. They call it Ilaha. No matter the case, he is the supreme judge, and he is the one who is asking you, did you, did you vote for ceasefire? Did you raise your hand and you took the initiative to stop and block, to stop those blockades and to help the poor and the needy, not the rich and the powerful? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Virginia Remedy Brown.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
And staff. My name is Virginia Remedy Brown. I live at 21 Ivy Road with my wife Fern and our two children. And I'm going to read Fern's statement tonight. I appreciate your listening to the comments of all Malden constituents and working to incorporate them into the current ceasefire resolution. However, I maintain that a ceasefire resolution in Malden is a terrible waste of taxpayers' time and cities' councillors' time and money. The current ceasefire resolution has gone through several, several iterations, and the final version is flawed, not only because any ceasefire resolution is divisive and harmful to our residents, but also because of specifics within the document. Israel, which did not start this war, requires two things for a ceasefire resolution to be effective. One, bring home the hostages, and two, Hamas must lay down its arms and cease to attack Israel. Although the document says that the Malden City Council supports the work of President Biden and the UN Security Council to broker a bilateral lasting ceasefire in Gaza, it doesn't mention the hostages. It doesn't call Hamas a terrorist organization, and it says ceasefire in Gaza, but not ceasefire in Israel. It mentions pro-Palestinian racism. Is Palestinian a race? The shipli barbo attachment in the agenda is by the New York Times, which is slanted against Israel and contains historical inaccuracies. The number of fatalities in Gaza is reported by the Gaza Ministry of Health, which is a Hamas proxy, and therefore inaccurate. Included in the youth fatalities are those who are trained from age five to becoming Hamas militants.
Next speaker.
Louise London.
Hello, Louise London, 10 Spruce Street, Malden. I'm wondering, why might you vote for the ceasefire resolution? Possibly wanting to get ahead in politics and not caring about the aftermath because it won't personally affect you? Or you simply like people on one side of the argument and dislike those on the other side? Or there's a backdoor quid pro quo thing going on here? Or you're into fomenting division and enjoy pitting one side against the other, and then you can calmly sit back and watch everything fester and explode? This kind of behavior is so un-Malden. The war in question is not at all like any of our past wars. It began because suddenly and without warning or provocation, innocent people living in a free nation, living their everyday lives, men, women, children, babies, yes, people just like us. It could have been us had we been living there. Were brutally slaughtered and kidnapped for no reason other than, well, demented hatred. Israel wants peace. If tomorrow your ceasefire were to happen, there would be continued strife in that region. Nothing would change. However, if tomorrow Hamas were to surrender, return all the hostages, then tomorrow there would be peace. Israel wants peace. Supposedly, this resolution's goal is to stop crimes in Gaza. Well, if we're gonna go there, how about a resolution to stop crimes in Israel that come from Gaza? A resolution approved in Malden mass in the USA will have no effect in the Middle East. What must happen is the return of all living hostages, sadly, the return of all deceased hostages' bodies, and the complete surrender of Hamas. Or let's have no resolution at all, because what difference will it make anyway? One last thing. In Israel, Jews, Muslims, Christians, and other people of various religions live, love, and work amongst themselves peacefully, a highly diverse area. Kind of sounds like Malden, doesn't it? Please don't ruin our fair city by passing a misguided and unnecessary resolution, and thanks to all of you for listening to our comments here.
Time.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Edwin Andrews.
My name is Edwin Bartolome Andrews. I live on Cleveland Street and Ward 8. I am here to again urge the esteemed members of this council to vote no on the proposed ceasefire resolution regarding Israel and Gaza. What is happening is tragic, but is solely the result of Hamas breaking the existing ceasefire on October 7th, on the festive Jewish holiday of Simchat Torah. Calling for a ceasefire now before Israel has destroyed Hamas simply plays into Hamas in its enabler's hands, and that seal there says Malden, doesn't say United States of America. I am concerned that passing this resolution will divide our beautifully diverse community. For example, one thing that the Malden Jewish community has been involved in for many years is Project Ezra, when we come together to help feed the hungry and the lonely on Christmas Day. I have been told by key members of this effort that if this resolution were to pass, that they would not continue performing this mitzvah. Risking this interfaith event over a resolution that will have zero impact is one important consequence that would occur. We should be able to live peacefully in this city of Malden. I feel this for many reasons, but my own background is a significant part of this. My mother was born in Morocco, descended from Jews who fled the Spanish Inquisition and who then lived peacefully in Muslim-majority Morocco. My mother survived World War II because sailors on the USS Massachusetts helped free North Africa during Operation Torch in November of 1942. Had it not been for this campaign, she, along with the rest of the Jewish community in Morocco, would likely have met the same fate that 6 million Jews and 5 million others, including the gay community, met in Europe simply because of who they were. Had Israel existed in 1939, the Jews of Europe, including Anne Frank, would have had a safe haven, and many, if not most, of my fellow Jews would have survived the Holocaust. The reestablishment of the State of Israel on May 14, 1948, was the dream of Jews more than 3,000 years due to virulent antisemitism.
Time up, Ed. Time up.
If you don't want the results of the war, don't start.
Tina Weldy.
All right, please, no cross talk, please. Address the council.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Counselors and Madam City Clerk, as one councillor wisely suggested at the community engagement.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tina Weldy, 97 Hill Street, Malden.
Thank you.
As one councillor wisely suggested at the community engagement meeting last week, if our city resolution must be passed, it should be one of support and affirmation of our entire community. We are a diverse city. There are sadly devastating conflicts occurring in countries across, across the globe, all of which are places where Malden residents surely have loved ones. Any resolution should acknowledge all these tragedies that affect our residents. Having grown up in this city, I have never witnessed such a degree of high tension and animosity amongst neighbors. It was horrifying to see people mocking speakers during public comment of the June 4th meeting, and it was heartbreaking seeing gestures of intimidation by some young people to their neighbors right here within the council chambers. One councillor proclaimed that the meeting was necessary and beautiful. I could not disagree more with that statement. I've seen the best of Malden, and I've seen the worst, and that was the worst. I am speaking as a Malden teacher for 23 years, as well as a member of the Malden Jewish Alliance. I have had the honor and pleasure of working with hundreds of beautifully diverse Malden students and their families. I developed a cooperative learning exchange with the Immigrant Learning Center in Malden Square, with the goal of exposing our students to the richness of cultures and experiences within our community. However, I've experienced antisemitic actions over the years. One example was when I was told by a student's parents that they did not want their child around anything Jewish, and that child was transferred to another classroom simply because the teacher was Jewish. The antisemitism was simply brushed under the rug. No discussion. Antisemitism has always been present, but recently, open acts have become widespread. It is not okay to claim that any proposed resolution for Malden is an act of kindness in recognizing one group at the expense of safety of another group.
You still got five seconds. Five seconds.
My time comes from up here.
Five seconds, right.
I think I need a few more seconds because it's been taken.
Five, give you five seconds. You were interrupting.
Yep.
All right, five seconds.
It is unconscionable that this is being normalized in our community. Please, let us not normalize any type of hate in any way, shape, or form in our community.
Mohammed Musallah.
Mohammed Musallah, 64 Essex Street. I stand before you today with grief and hope, urging you to support. I stand before you today with grief and hope, urging you to support a true ceasefire resolution. Last time I was standing here, I shared the pain of my community, the Muslim community, that has been enduring for the past eight months. Some of you responded with compassion, visiting our mosque and praying with us. And for this, I thank Council members Steve Winslow, Chris Seminelli, Karen Cullen-Hayes, Carrie McDonald, and Ryan O'Malley. Today, my wife and I shared the pain of these two beautiful souls, Anis and Anser. Anser, a mere five years old, had his leg amputated without pain medication, only for it to be infected, amputated, infected, and amputated again. The pain and trauma he has endured are unimaginable. Anis, just 13 years old, had over 50% of his body burned to the bone. For the past months, he's been going through surgeries almost every day just to reconstruct his muscle and skin. Just last week, two of their uncles were killed. Our community in Malden have lost hundreds of loved ones over the past months. This is our collective pain. Anis and Anser, like so many others, are asking for their parents and siblings to be brought back to them. We know this is impossible. What we can do, what we must do, is call for ceasefire. We must give those who remain a chance to survive, to heal, and to rebuild their lives. I pray for the safe release of all Israeli hostages and all Palestinian detainees. I pray for the end of this war, or what-- and I implore all of you to find your moral compass--
I'm only the one to call time, so--
--and summon the courage to call for ceasefire. I pray that you will take the steps to bring everyone in this room together once again. Again, I implore you to call for ceasefire.
We have one speaker left. I just make a note, I'm the one who calls time. If you all, someone out here calls time, we're actually giving people a little more time to speak because it's interfering with their ability to talk to the council. So I am the one to speak, all right? So we have a clock up here. That's the official time, so, all right? Thank you. So please do not call time. I'm the one who's calling times, so. All right, next and final speaker.
Thank you, Caitlin Peel Sloan, 69 Columbia Street. I'm speaking tonight in favor of a strong ceasefire resolution. Three weeks ago and tonight, you heard from our Palestinian neighbors and friends about the extreme pain that they and their families have suffered. They've lost so many family members. This pain is a local Malden issue. Some on the other side of the aisle tonight have expressed personal pain from October 7th, and the city has formally acknowledged their pain. Our Palestinian neighbors, who have spoken so eloquently in favor of the resolve, are still waiting to have their basic humanity and pain acknowledged. This resolve is the centrist and moderate path forward. It is the least you can do. We cannot shove this issue under a rug. And so if we want a path forward as a community, I urge you to pass a strong ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our public comment segment. Or did you have, you had one other thing to talk about, another paper, right?
Yes, please, thank you. I wanted to just make note that we had five submitted emails on Paper 298. Three of those were in support, two of those were in opposition. They've been attached to the history of the paper. I believe there'll be plenty more time to review those public comments, because this paper most likely will be referred to the ordinance committee for further review. But I want to put that on the record for the evening. Thank you.
All right. And so as I mentioned at the beginning of the public comment, we will now take up paper, and we'll go into committee reports. Paper 30124. Clerk will read the paper.
Paper 301-24, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Community--
Sorry, did we test the consent agenda? No, we're skipping to the committee reports. Yeah, that's right. So, yeah.
The Standing Committee on Community Engagement and Inclusion, to whom was referred Paper 271, Series of 2024.
All right. All right. Please, only note, all right?
Paper 301-24, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Community Engagement and Inclusion, to whom was referred Paper 271, Series of 2024, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this paper out favorably as amended to the full council.
All right. On Counselor Cullen-Hayes's motion to receive the committee report seconded by-- is it seconded that? Who's on the committee? By Counselor McDonald?
Counselor Taylor.
Oh, Counselor Taylor seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the report is hereby received. Clerk will read the paper. I guess it's-- oh, yeah, let's see, yeah. They're gonna read the paper, and then she'll talk on the report.
I'm sorry.
Okay, right, yep. Yep. So clerk will read the paper.
Paper 271-24, Resolve. Whereas the Malden City Council recognizes and affirms that all life is precious, whereas the Malden City Council denounces violence and terrorism and affirms the safety, dignity, freedom, and humanity of all people, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, or nationality. Whereas we recognize the grief and suffering from the Hamas terrorist attacks of October 7th, 2023, in the urgent humanitarian crisis in Gaza. Whereas Malden is home to a diverse community, including those with familial and relational ties to Israelis and Palestinians. Whereas we are committed to fostering an environment in which people from all faith backgrounds are safe, celebrated, and respected. Now therefore be it resolved that the Malden City Council supports the work of President Biden and the U.N. Security Council to broker a bilateral lasting ceasefire in Gaza. Be it further resolved that the Malden City Council stands in allyship with our Jewish and Israeli community against anti-Semitism, and with our Muslim, Arab, and Palestinian communities as allies against Islamophobia and anti-Palestinian and anti-Arab racism. Be it further resolved that Malden is a community of safety for all, and that we reject any and all types of hate speech, intimidation, bullying, and violence against any and all individuals. And finally, be it further resolved that we, the Malden City Council, will work to build bridges and create dialogue among those in our city who are suffering in grief and trauma, and will build on our rich history to support a future where we value our thriving and active community across faiths and cultures.
So Counselor Cullen-Hayes for the committee.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. There you go.
Thank you, Counselor Cullen-Hayes. So last week, we met on Tuesday, the Community Engagement and-- Engagement and Inclusion Committee. We met on Tuesday, and everybody did exactly what we were tasked to do from the previous week, which was take community feedback. I want to thank our committee members. They were fantastic. And those off-committee who also came to the meeting. We really did the best we could by hearing from as many folks that we could. And that is our job as a city councilor. Our job is to listen to the people. It's not just filling potholes, but it is to listen to the people, and that's what we did in that committee. And we discussed all of the feedback. And then it was, I really want to thank everybody because we did, we went back and forth with wording, and we came up with something that we all agreed on, and we voted out unanimously by our committee members what our clerk just read and what is out on the agenda that you see on our-- and it was voted out, yeah, unanimously, and what you see on the city websites. Sorry.
So unanimously--
Unanimously in our committee.
And what was the unanimous vote? What was--
It was to pass the language that you see that the clerk just read, the paper 21724 as amended.
All right. So that, thank you for the report. I have Counselor McDonald as--
Thank you.
--next up. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you all. I do have comments on the paper as a whole, but before we get to that, I do want to, you know, appreciate the folks who send in comments during the meetings that we had of the Community Engagement and Inclusion Committee. Thank you, Counselor Cullen-Hayes, for leading those meetings. I've come to understand in the last few days that there were, there was actually some key pieces of feedback that never got through, and I think this is probably because we were having some email issues. It was hard for everything to get through, and I think there was a while there where we really weren't getting everybody's email. So I really do thank folks who have come back and sent their comments again. So I do, however, though, think basically that where the committee landed in terms of the, what it's seeking to put in the resolution, in the resolve, should not be challenged. So I want to recommend that a slight change to the clause here that just reorganizes what is said here. It's not my goal to add anything different or subtract anything from this resolution, but to better take into account the feedback, which we tried to do last week but had missed this piece. And, you know, I apologize to our community members for anybody whose emails didn't get through. So my proposed change to this clause is the clause, "Now therefore be resolved." It currently reads, "Now therefore be resolved that the Malden City Council supports the work of President Biden and the U.N. Security Council to broker a bilateral lasting ceasefire." My proposed change would be to say, "Now therefore be resolved that the Malden City Council calls on our federal representatives to support a bilateral lasting ceasefire in Gaza, such as the one recently approved by the United Nations Security Council." Now, I understand that those sound very similar. The feedback that we received was about making sure that we are speaking to our federal representatives and not directly to the president. There is certainly precedent for us adopting resolutions that call on our federal representatives and the federal government. And clarifying that this is not necessarily the only plan, but it is still important to include the reference to what has happened in the United Nations Security Council as a reference point for what we are, in fact, calling for, and that that is not open to wild interpretation, as there are certainly many plans out there. So that would be-- I understand that there is no language that everyone loves or supports. That's not how this process works. I think the goal was just to limit the gap and to find the language that is not saying things that we are not trying to say, actually. That was a lot of the work. And so I think that this, if the council would consider this, just final tweak to this, to this clause here, I think that will be as close as we can get to those goals, and then we shall have to vote. Thank you.
All right. Any further? Counselor Seminelli, we have a second, or what?
Can I second that?
What? Did, so Counselor Cullen-Hayes is going to second the motion there?
Yeah.
All right. So at this moment, then, we can discuss the amendment if that's before we go to the main paper. So Counselor Seminelli, is that what you want to talk about, the amendment? So, all right, go ahead then. Great.
Thank you, Mr.--
Let's see, I'm sorry, I have you up here. All right. There you go. There you go. Great.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, you know, give everybody a brief synopsis of what I've been up to for the last two or three weeks, and I know that a lot of my colleagues have been doing the same. And, you know, we received a multitude of phone calls, texts, emails, letters to the house, and I've done my due diligence to try and answer everybody back. Some people I even talked to twice. Some people I'd met at their house, went for a walk with them, and talked about it. And even on the last Tuesday, on the final hour, I was in Honeydew Donuts with Nicole and Representative Matthew, who's sitting in the back. And, you know, it's kind of funny, because up until then, I realized that they never met each other before. And I was kind of like relaying messages back and forth like a ping pong ball. So I said, "Well, hey, listen, how about doing this? How about if we meet up at Honeydew Donuts, like 2:30 in the afternoon? I'll bring both copies of the newest version of the resolution. I'll bring two pens. You guys can go back and forth and put in what you like and what you don't like." And maybe we'll get nowhere, but at least it's our last-ditch effort to try and put something together before it gets voted out. And I think there was headway made there. Maybe not so much for this paper here. It started to get a little bit of back and forth going, and I think I liked what I heard about trying to join together in the future and over the summer and doing some sort of vigils together. I liked what I heard when they were talking in that language. But I just want, I just want you to know that, like, you know, at the end of the day, you got to understand that, like, no matter what we vote on up here, I mean, we could have the most perfect document in front of us that Thomas Jefferson himself wrote for us. And at the end of the day, because of the high volatile situation that's happening over there, not everybody's going to walk away from here tonight happy. It's just the way it is. And, but I want to let you all know that myself and everybody up here on the podium took the last two or three weeks off. We've, you know, we've got a lot of activities at our year-end. We've got the budget. Some of us ward counselors work on, you know, the Fourth of July, which a lot goes into that, on preparation. We've had some other events, tying up loose ends. So we put all those on hold, just so that we heard this loud and clear and how important it was for both sides. And I'm talking morning, noon, and night, we were on the phone. So I just wanted to express that to you folks. And like I said, I thought I had, like, the, I thought I had the fine old verbiage. When I left Honeydew Donuts and I blasted to the house, took a shower, I was running up the hill here, I was out of breath, and I finally got up here, and, you know, we had something, a little something. And then it just all fell apart in the last 30 seconds before we got to vote on it. So it's kind of disheartening when that happens, but now we can see what they've been going through over there in the Middle East for the last thousand years when they think that they come to a resolution. So I just want, I just want that to be said. I want it to be known. And, you know, I just want to say this to you. During this experience for me, I felt that there was several things wrong right off the bat. Let's just forget about the verbiage. Let's take that right out of the picture. I truly believe that we'd have enough time to engage with both sides of the community. I mean, I've got to meet with Nicole, I got to meet with Matthew, and I got to meet with several others out there, whether it be at the mosque, whether it be at the temple, whether it be at your houses, whether it be on the bike lane, to get your point of views. I would personally, I would have liked to have seen more time in this. You know, I would have liked to have seen more meetings over the summer on something like this. Because I've always said, I've always said--
All right, please.
I gave you guys a chance to talk.
Counselor Seminelli, please try to address the council, please, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you got to talk to them, too. So what I'm saying is, is that I think that if we had more time, then we could have got more dialogue from both sides. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. And the other thing is, we started off on the wrong foot to begin with, because we were told that one of the parties didn't want to have a subcommittee meeting on their holiday. And yet we ignored it and still did it on their holiday anyway. And for what? I just can't understand what the rush is to do these things and to insult people. So we already started off on the wrong foot already by having it on a holiday for one of the parties. So, you know, I just feel as though, and I said this right from the beginning, that I don't think that I'm qualified to write something like this. Now, I take my hat off to my colleagues, both Counselor McDonald and Counselor Lennahan, because they're very good writers, and they did some really good stuff. Put some really good verbiage down on the paper. And from now on, I think if I need to get a paper written, I know who I'm going to see. But once again, I didn't hear from enough of you folks. You guys should be the ones writing this, not me. It's not about me. It's about you. So we should be hearing about--
Hey, Counselor Seminelli.
Hold on, hold on. We should be hearing from both sides. We should be hearing from both sides is what I'm trying to say here. And that's all I was looking for. And we didn't, so I think we've come up a little short because of that. And the other thing is, I've never heard of, and I, listen, I worked for the Department of Corrections and I was.
Counselor Seminelli.
Hold on, hold on. I was an employee relations advisor for years, and I've never seen.
Counselor Seminelli, we have this amendment here.
Yeah, I know what you got. I'm, I'm on, listen, Mr. President, I have the floor right now. This is a very, this is a very high topic here. I am trying to explain my reasoning and what I've done, and you want to shut me down.
I'm not shutting you down. I'm just trying to refocus.
Yeah, you hit me one more time, get off the chair and switch over, then we can debate. Now, so what I'm going to say is this.
I'm just trying to have you focus on the amendment, all right?
But you're interrupting me when I'm trying to speak.
All right. Go ahead.
All right? You do that a lot.
Go ahead.
So what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, I would like to have more time to hear both sides of the story a little bit more. And because I haven't, and, you know, the, this subcommittee that we're on, it's community engagement, and we didn't hear from the community. You got the watch from a, from a Zoom, but yet you didn't get the way in. So I just think that we should, we could have had a little bit more input. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks.
I would have liked to have had more input.
We have Counselor Sika, please, right?
Thank you, Council President. So three weeks ago, I seconded a motion made by my colleague, Counselor Spatafor, to send this resolve to the Citizen Engagement Committee that is chaired by Counselor Cologne Hayes. And when I made that motion to second it, I expected, similar to what Counselor Seminelli just mentioned, that that committee is to engage the citizens. That's the name of the committee, Citizen Engagement Committee. So I expected that we would, Counselor Cologne Hayes would, you know, get a meeting together, not on a Jewish holiday or a Muslim holiday, because she actually scheduled both meetings. One week was a Jewish holiday, and then the following week was a Muslim holiday. So each meeting, one of the sides were not represented well, and I actually think that the whole Zoom was kind of ridiculous, if you want my honest opinion. I, I do understand that it was, you know, made by, it was made by, I think, the chief of police that suggested that we do that, but it was only a suggestion. It wasn't necessarily how we had to have that particular meeting. And I believe that both, both sides should have been able to come together to have drafted, to help us all up here draft a language that both sides could have been okay with. Because our job up here is not to divide this city, and this is all that this resolve, as far as I'm concerned, has done, is, is completely divided the community. And I, I don't want to have to pick a side. Because this was handled the way that it was handled, and rushed, if you want my honest opinion, I can't, I got onto that Zoom meeting for the first one. I didn't go to the last one because I had a prior engagement, but I, I do believe that both sides should have had a seat at the table and, and given us some sort of wording. Because these emails, I, I don't know about everybody else, but I must have gotten 5,000 emails. I cannot possibly go through each and every one to see what side suggests what words should be in this resolve. I, I really truly thought a small group from one side and a small group from the other, who had, you know, vested interests in both, would have come together to the Citizen Engagement Committee. Normally, we're always about bringing the community together, and everyone wants to hear what they have to say. But it's funny, on this particular, this particular topic, it was, oh, we're not going to take any comments from the citizens, which baffled me, because every other, every other topic that we discussed, we welcome community engagement, and this one, we stifled it, as far as I'm concerned. So I will not be supporting this paper with a yes or a no. I'm going to be abstaining from this vote this evening, because I don't think that it's fair. It's, it was not my intention three weeks ago to send this to the Citizen Engagement Committee to engage our citizens in how both sides would like to see this resolve worded. And I don't think that we did that. I, I don't think that we did our due diligence to help either side of, of this equation. I, I truly don't. And I'm, I, for the first time in 11 years, sitting up here at a city council meeting, I'm actually sad. I'm, I'm very sad for our community that it has come to this. Before this meeting started, we were sitting in another meeting, and I watched a man outside be arrested for, I don't know what. I was inside, so I don't know what he was arrested for, but it broke my heart, because that man is affected by this personally, as is everybody in this room. My husband and my in-laws are of the Jewish community. I get it. I, I am an Italian-American. I, I don't, I don't watch the news often, but when I do, like, that broke my heart that the gentleman outside is now have to worry about being arrested and legal fees, going to court, disrupting his life. It, it could affect his livelihood over something that could have been prevented, as far as I'm concerned, because I'm not quite sure that this is the platform. I never, ever would have thought I would ever be agreeing with Mr. Mark Bernstein, who's, who stood up here. I, I'm pretty sure he has said some pretty awful things about me on social media over the last four or five years, but I agree with him. My job up here as the city councillor is to plan community events, fix potholes. Someone has a tree down, or a limb, or branches too close to power lines, I'm the person that you call for that. I am not the person that you should be calling for Gaza, for Israel, for any, I mean, even, even the Haitian resolve that we did a few months back. I questioned even passing that resolve. We are a local government. Our job is to take care of local issues. We don't have anything to do with abortion, women's rights. That's not what you do on a local level. The local level is for you to take care of your constituents, and exactly what Mr. Bernstein said.
Please.
Everybody is, everybody are my constituents. Every single person in this room is my constituent. And that, excuse me.
Please, no.
And that.
All right.
Really?
All right. Come on. All right. Come on.
I chose, I didn't meet with anybody.
All right.
Exactly.
Time for public comment is gone, all right?
Exactly. Because it's not my job to meet with people on this issue. This is an international issue. This has nothing to do with me as a city councillor in the city of Malden.
Counselor Sika, we, we understand, but, but, all right. I just want to make clear.
I just want to make clear right now, the question before the council is whether to adopt Counselor McDonald's motion to amend the paper and the recommendation that came out of the committee. So that is what is, the main question is the, the other paper. So I heard Counselor Seminelli make a motion to move the previous question, which I would interpret at this point to say that it's related to this proposal to amend the resolution. Is that correct, Mr. Seminelli?
Yes.
So that takes a two-thirds vote of the council? So is there a second of that motion? To end the debate on the amendment, it takes two-thirds vote. So is anybody going to second that, or should we continue to debate the amendment? So Counselor Cullen Hayes, I will, and go Counselor Cullen Hayes on the motion to amend.
Thank you. I saw Counselor Lenihan's light on, and I just want to. Okay. Well, I wanted to make sure that everybody was heard here.
So it's on the motion to amend.
The motion, yeah. I'm, I'm fine with moving it forward. Yeah, we're here, and, but I did want, I pushed it before you, but go ahead. I, I'm going to give my time to Counselor Lenihan.
All right. So Counselor, Counselor Lenihan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am feeling conflicted on this, because I do feel like everybody I know walked in here tonight trying to get to the point where we can take a vote on this. I mean, this is our last meeting, but also just morally speaking, I don't think anybody in here doesn't want the hostilities to end. Nobody in here does not want a actual ceasefire. That's, that's a preposterous thing to accuse people of. My, my gut feeling here is that we could continue editing this indefinitely, and at a certain point, we just need to decide on what the language is going to be and take the vote. We have been putting this community through untold trauma and grief and just stuff that I never thought I would see happen inside the room, outside the room, over email, on phone calls, on social media. I'm frankly disgusted with it, and I don't want to hold this up any further. I think, I want to, I, I think it's important to explain my vote on everything, and where I'm having trouble with this is that I feel like it both essentially says the exact same thing after hours of meetings in, in our committee, in this room, and then also private conversations that I know all of us have been having. I walked in the room tonight thinking that we had consensus on language, and yet here we are, and Counselor McDonald, I'm not spotting you on this. I understand this came from the community. I just want to be really clear on that. We are now being asked to make yet another edit that, you know, I, I do government writing for a living. I understand when you put the word "federal representatives" in, it's for an advocacy purpose, right? This is further, in my view, moving us away from what our council's role is. I understand that in our charter, we're allowed to give instructions to higher levels of government, and I do think that that is the, the only way that you can make the case that this is appropriate, in addition to just simply responding to what constituents are asking us to speak to. And I, I hear my colleagues saying that there are things that we need to be focusing on. The budget is the most important thing that we do, in my view, and as Counselor McDonald said last week, we have a crisis ahead of us. We just do. We have a very, very hard job ahead. What I've learned, though, is that if the community is so overwhelmed with something going on in our midst that they actually can't engage in the budget, which I would argue is the most important thing for us to focus on, that you could make the case that we actually should address it. And so that is how I'm engaging on this right now, because the community in such a high volume came to us and said, "Please speak to this." That's what we're doing here. I, I do not actually think that even if we change this, and it is used in an advocacy method, that it is actually going to change the position of our federal officials. I just don't. I'm just one person, though. That's my personal feeling. I am not disrespecting anybody else who disagrees with that. I think that, I really, I really wish we could just go with the original version here, and then I'd like to move the original question. I am just very, very torn on this language, and I would like to hear what some of my colleagues think.
All right. So again, this is on the motion to amend, and Counselor Spatafor has not spoken on yet, so I'm going to.
Well, let's talk about the bigger papers.
All right. So, so you, you don't want to speak on the amendment?
Well, it's on the amendment.
Okay. Counselor Condon, you want to speak on the amendment? You hadn't spoken yet. Counselor Crowe, do you want to speak on the amendment? All right. So then Counselor Seminelli, you would be the second. Do you want to speak again on the amendment?
No.
All right. Any Counselor O'Malley or anything on the amendment? Or any further discussion on the amendment wanted? Counselor O'Malley? Let's see. Let me get you up there.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I, I also see that it's functionally the same, but I, I understand that, I understand the, the distinction. You know, referring to federal, you know, representatives of the federal, federal delegation includes every federal representative from president, our congresspeople, our senators. So I, I'm not, I don't think it's a sticking point. I do want to point out that the reason why we didn't get into the nitty-gritty of the, the way in which this conflict would end is because we specifically referred to the U.N. brokered resolution, because that has the, the details that we are not equipped or qualified to address. We don't have all the information, and that is the reason why I believe that what is being asked here is functionally equivalent. So I'm not opposed to the amendment. I'm not particularly for the amendment, but I do think that it is important that we resolve this tonight. It's not fair to our community for this to continue to go on. Thank you.
So does anybody want to speak further on the amendment? Counselor Cullen Hayes? No? Anybody want to speak further on the amendment? Counselor Condon, you want to speak on the amendment?
I'm not sure if I'm the amendment or not.
Okay. Well, let's see. So, so the amendment is what Counselor McDonald proposed to make a change to the paper that came out of committee. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll speak to that. But the thing that surprises me is it's a resolution from the Malden City Council that people ceasefire, but nowhere, and I don't know who could answer this question, nowhere in this statement that it's a sentence of the city council, does the word "peace" appear, unless I missed it. I think it should say that the people of Gaza and the people of Israel move forward and support peace, peace in the future. And that's the only way I'm going to vote for anything. Thank you.
So Counselor Condon, is that a motion to make a further amendment? Is that? Is that, I don't know if anybody would second that motion, or do we?
I would second the amendment. But I was hoping to add to that.
Okay.
Yeah. Go on. She wants to make the motion.
All right. But, I mean, otherwise, we, I don't hear a second to that amendment at the moment, so, all right.
I'll second peace, but where do we put in peace?
What? All right.
Where can we put in peace, y'all?
All right. So I would need specific language from Counselor Condon. So we're not, we're smiting it unless someone else wants to make an amendment.
I don't have it. Maybe the sponsor of the paper might find the place to put the word "peace."
All right. But, I mean, so Counselor Condon, I don't consider that a motion, so, someone else. So Counselor Cullen Hayes, are you interested in talking about the motion that Counselor McDonald has introduced? That is what the question is before us.
Okay.
Counselors can figure out if they're going to make another motion, but, so.
Can we take another motion without voting on the first motion, just a procedure?
Yeah. So are you, do you want to speak on the first motion? That's what the, what right before is.
No, I'm okay with the first motion. I'm, um.
So if, if, is anybody want to speak further on Counselor McDonald's motion? If not, we will move that question.
Yeah, I want to make another motion.
But do you, right now, the motion that's on the floor is to amend according to the language that Counsel. So, all right. So no one else wants to, Counselor McDonald, do you want to speak for? All right. So let's move, the question's been moved on Counselor McDonald's motion to amend the paper that came out of committee to strike the language about supports the work of the President Biden and the U.N. Security Council to broker a bilateral lasting ceasefire and calls on our federal representatives to support a bilateral lasting ceasefire in Gaza, such as the one recently approved by the United Nations Security Council. So, actually, I didn't get to speak on this, so I will just take a moment myself. I actually like this new language, because in our charter, we talk about being able to instruct our representatives, and I think it is actually more in the spirit of our charter, so, so that, that's would be my rationale. I think it's, it's not, otherwise, the city has been changed, but I think it actually reflects more of what our charter says, so. But otherwise, let's take the roll call. Thank you.
Actually, if I could.
Okay. What?
I would have, I would like to, can I?
To further talk on the amendment? All right.
Because I'm trying to figure out.
Okay. So second time on the amendment, Counselor Condon?
Can you turn me on?
One second. So we're talking on the motion to amend that.
Counsel, I think Counselor Condon has, has brought up a really great point about the fact that peace is not mentioned in this, and I think that that is the ultimate goal.
So that's another motion.
So, no, I'm seconding Counselor, I'm just going to tell you what Counselor Condon's, if there's a friendly amendment to the language, because it's in the same line, may I?
Is it in, are you amending the?
Amen. I'm asking for a friendly amendment. So, so the, what we're talking about would read, what?
What?
Now therefore be resolved that the Malden City Council calls on our federal representatives to support a bilateral lasting ceasefire in Gaza, such as the one recently approved by the United Nations Security Council, to promote a pathway to peace.
Yeah. Yes.
Yep. Where this Counselor's, so, so is that, Counselor Condon, will you second that?
Is that for reflect what you are? That's Counselor Condon's motion. I second it.
All right. So, so will that, that be the first thing? If, if we could just vote to amend Counselor McDonald's amendment, and then we can just finish discussing that? Unless Counselor, did you want to change the Counselor McDonald's amendment?
I want to add another amendment.
Okay, all right. So, so we're right now, so why don't we take a roll call on Counselor Condon's amendment?
Can I just accept his amendment?
Oh, okay, all right. So, all right, so it's accepted as a friendly amendment? Anybody have an objection to accept, accepting Counselor Condon's language as a friendly amendment? All right, so then the paper is thereby amended? Or at least the, the proposed amendment is?
It's amended. You have to hold on my end.
So, and, any further discussion on the Counselor McDonald's amendment as friendly amended? All right. So let's take the roll call on the.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafor. Counselor Taylor. Counsel President Winslow.
Yes.
Paper's been amended.
So the paper's been amended? So Counselor Spatafor, I will recognize you as proposing an, an additional amendment, so.
Yeah, I, I, I want to speak on this process, and I'm going to make an amendment, and I don't want it to be a joke, because it's not a joke, because I'll tell you what a joke is, is this entire process, all right? This, this is my, this is my problem with this paper. This is my problem. This is a political stunt. That's all this is, all right? Because if we're going to add motions, then I want to add in Syria, the invasion of Ukraine, Haiti, and North Africa, as well as, as well as, as well as Jashalyn Nukri, who was a 12-year-old woman who was raped in Houston by a migrant. So why don't we secure the border? We're at it. And the reason why I say that is because we're adding things, we're adding things on the floor that, to be quite honest with you, should it happen in your, your committee meeting, Counselor Cologne Hayes? It's called the citizen engagement. And what we're doing now is the opposite of what you talk about, is bringing the city together. We literally divided the city. There's no doubt in my mind, there's no doubt in my mind that we, I want peace in the entire world, not just in one area. There are tragedies happening all over the world, in our backyard, in Texas, in the Middle East, Gaza, everywhere. There's no doubt about it. I can't speak to it. I grew up here, I'm lucky enough. But we, this council wanted to have a citizen engagement committee. The charter of the citizen engagement committee is to engage the citizens of this community. And we send something there so we don't have this debate, because at the end of the day, we're going to walk out of here, vote up or vote down, and one side is not going to like us. So the engagement didn't work. It should be disengagement committee. This should have happened, this should have happened in a public setting, just like we forced when we put artificial turf discussion on a field in the city of Malden, which we spent more time on and money. This should have happened, and I was at those meetings remotely, and I, I was appalled that we have a citizens engagement committee, and you don't allow either side to talk. Okay? You don't allow either side to talk, and then we come here, and this is the circus, because they're not happy, they're not happy, and we're not happy. And so what's going to happen is more diversion in this community. I certainly want peace. I don't want to see any more bombs. I don't want to see any more kids die on any side. I don't want to see any kids die next door or up front, but guess what's going to happen? It's going to continue. So all this discussion should have happened in a public location in the citizen engagement, but no, we tie up city resources, police and fire, we put the news cameras on to show how loving Malden is, right? It looks like a war zone out there, instead of doing this in a committee where you literally charted that you wanted to do it, and you don't allow it. Why? Because it's hard? You're damn right it's hard. That's why it's been going on for hundreds of years, and we're not going to solve it here. This paper is not before us in good faith. Neither side agree, and neither side will ever agree. But I am not going to vote for something that's, they're going to be upset and they're upset. There's a happy meeting. What the happy meeting is? Peace, period. That's the happy meeting. So if you're going to have a city, a citizens engagement committee, you better open it up to the public, because if not, I'm going to ask this body to disband it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I want to have, I want peace everywhere. Peace everywhere. It's not funny, the 12-year-old girl got raped, right?
Please direct your comments to the fellow counselors, right?
Oh, it's okay for them to talk?
No, that's not okay for them to talk. I'm telling them not to talk either, so yeah, so yeah.
I, I want to know why we had a citizen engagement committee and nobody's allowed to talk. That's what I want to know. And then we're going to sit up here and make amendments the last day of the, of the council meeting, because we want to be rushed. That's what this is. It's a joke, and it's a mockery, and some people, I don't know, are people happy doing this? I'm not, because I'm, we're going to leave here hated. We are going to leave here hated, whether one side hates us or the other side. This has divided the city, and we go home tonight, we look at our Channel 11 news, we should all be proud, because the cameras are going to show probably the rest out there, they'll go after the cops, they'll say the city's divided, and you know what? It is. It's a joke. I yield my time, but I do want my amendment to include those other countries, Ukraine. All right, I'll make the amendment. We're going to put peace everywhere. I want peace in Ukraine. I want us to secure the border. You, you laugh. Is there a problem with that?
Sorry, Mr. Spatafor.
I'll play, okay. All right, please, all right. All right, please. So, so peace in Ukraine.
I would defund Russia, add that.
No, no. No.
I can't even fund, I can't even fund the school system. You thinking about me, I'm going to fund United States?
I do have a question. Please. I have a point of information for, for, please, I'd like to have our city solicitor or clerk, is this amendment outside the scope of the open meeting law? So that's what I would ask.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I understand why it would be.
What? Outside the open meeting law?
I can hear amendment.
So I'm just, I just have a question for our city solicitor. I mean, we have an agenda. Peace in Russia was not, so I just.
So the paper.
So we can only be peace in certain countries?
Counselor Spatafor, I think that the paper that we're discussing right now was clearly listed on the agenda.
All right, that's fine. You know what? Take it off. Transparency's running rampant in this council, so take it off.
Fucking joke. I just, we're here. You can vote against this or not, but proposing something totally different, I think is.
It's all like this precious on this.
Yeah, so, so that's, so that covers it, all right? So I just think it's a question. Did, did our solicitor want to have any comment on that, or just?
No, I'll yield.
Yeah, all right, all right, yield. So Counselor Spatafor withdrew that.
So Counselor Spatafor, are you withdrawing your motion? Because it does have a second on the floor, and I don't think it's outside of the scope of the.
Okay, all right, so, but.
Vote it.
All right.
Vote it.
No, I, I have comments on the amendment.
All right.
I'll yield the comments.
I have comments on the amendment. May I, you turn me on?
I, I just, I'm confused at Counselor Spatafor, is that?
I get a second.
Motion and a second? I just, I, I, then I need the solicitor to come up and give an opinion here on whether this is within the scope of our, our meeting agenda. We have an open meeting law that says we have to put topics on the agenda, and whether this, peace in Russia.
All, all this precious.
So, so I just, I'm asking for a point of information, so we're not violating the law here, so, so yeah.
Do you mind if I just, before, I just don't think it's fair to put it on?
No, I, I just, I, I have this point of information, just part of my, all right, one second. Microphone, all right? So I just, this is part of my responsibility, make sure we're following the open meeting law, that's Counsel President. What, so, yeah, what? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just, oh, yeah. But, yeah, all right. Yeah, all right, so.
Counsel President, let me just read the paper to see if there is anything in this paper that would include peace in other areas. If you'd just give me a moment, please.
All right, thank you, Solicitor.
I would, I would, my opinion would be that it is possible, that it would violate the open meaning law. However, at the very end of the paper, it does state that, and we will build on our rich history to support a future where we value our thriving and active community across all faiths and cultures. That, I, I will say that the point of this paper is for Palestine and Israel. So that is actually the point of this paper. The point of this paper is not universal, so my opinion would be that it would violate the open meaning law.
So I'm going to rule that it's out of order, and so we need to move back to focusing on the, the motions that were there. So we have the, we have amended, we have, we have amended the resolution with Counselor Condon's proposal. Now we can talk about the main motion, unless there's any further motions. Counselor McDonald, you, let's see, I have, Counselor Crowe, did, did anybody want to speak on the amendment, or we can? We passed the amendment, so now we just, we're just talking about the main motion. So this is whether to pass the resolution as amended. No further discussion on amendments, and I, I don't see any other proposals, so, let's see. So Counselor Crowe, you are next up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just found this, this, I find this whole thing just extremely unsettling, and it has really divided our community, and, and it's very concerning how, the road we are. I did say in committee, I did offer, I do believe this should be universal. I got more emails and calls than that thanking me for standing up for those that didn't have a voice in this. We should be an inclusive community that recognizes the pain and the death and the destruction that is happening all over the world, and how people are feeling in our community. You know, we do, it talks a lot about our diversity. It should say we have a divided community, not a diverse community at this point, but the, and, but we have people that have families all over the world that are in distress with what's going on with theirs, and where is their voice? Just because they have not organized protests, or sent thousands and thousands of emails or demanded things, doesn't mean that they're not suffering. It doesn't mean that women, children, and families are dying in lots of areas, and the loss of any innocent life is just unacceptable, this included. I do think peace is the key, but I, like I said, I can't really support this, and it's not that I'm supporting one side or the other, but I do think we need to find a way that we bridge our community and not divide our community. So I will not be supporting this, because I don't think it, it accomplishes what we, what we really should be trying to accomplish, and that's unity.
So next up, we have Counselor McDonald, this is on the main question of passing the resolution.
Thank you, Counsel President. So I have to say that for folks who, my colleagues who think that more time would have led to language that could be acceptable to even just all the people in this room, I think that's folly. I do not think it is possible. I do not think it is possible. I think we are fundamentally in disagreement among the residents of this city. And I've talked to, I, I mean, I can't speak to what everyone else did. I know that a lot of people had a lot of meetings. I talked to a lot of people about very fine points of language, so I'm not even on the committee, but I tried to do my homework on this, and I can tell you, there is absolutely zero formulation of this paper that has unanimous support or anything like it in this community. It is simply an issue on which people are divided. And so we have this before us, and I, I mean, I, I really agree with this point that while we could have entered into this differently, we are here, and it is an appropriate use of the city council's work, energy, voice, to advocate to our federal representatives. Folks were mentioning this paper, it's about Haiti. This was one that I had sponsored in 2022, and it called on our federal government to cease deportations to Haiti under Title 42. There was no protest. This was just something that some organizers in the Haitian community had asked us to do, so that they could help raise the profile of this with our federal representatives. It wasn't unanimous. We took a vote, we passed it, it was fine. There was no police and fire detail involved. What's different is just the depth of pain and care about this issue in our community, which is why I feel like I have to care about it. I don't feel like it's optional for me to not care about something that affects my constituents this strongly. I want to note that I, I personally did reach out to our federal delegation as an individual elected official. I spoke with their staff on my feelings about what I would encourage them to do. Again, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I've been doing that for months. And I've come to really actually think that part of the wrestling and the pain that has, that we've gone through in the last few weeks, which pales in comparison to the pain of actually losing someone to a bomb, to a collapsing house, to a, you know, an attack in the night. It pales, but I think that maybe that taste is important for us to understand a little bit of what it's like to live in a community that feels so painfully divided, and where you feel unsafe, and where you feel like you don't know what your neighbor may think about that. So I feel like that is not, that's not the first time in my life that I've experienced that. This isn't about me, so I'm not going to go down that road, but I just want to say, I think that's probably important for our constituents on level to see that we engaged at that level as elected officials, that we struggled and tried and wrestled things back and forth, and made mistakes, and owned up to it. So I do appreciate my colleagues who have really spent time trying to figure out the best that we can do. I hope that this is ultimately, however this vote goes, is not just reported as a single punchline, but I hope the story of that wrestling and of what we have tried to do here in this time is, is a part of what gets spoken about, and what people say that Malden tried to do. And I am very much committed to, as I said, I mean, I explained my support for a ceasefire in the June 4th meeting, but I very much mean what I said, that I think that if what we, if we don't have any more public dialogues about this, I think that, I think that's wrong. I think that's a huge disservice to everyone. And I don't actually think we could have had very productive public dialogue while this was sitting on the table. It would have been the only thing that we debated. I think we could have done it before we had started down this road. We can do it after, but I don't think we could do it in the middle of it, because it would be the only thing that we would be really talking about. So I mean what I said about dialogue. There are a couple of groups that have been recommended that I've, that I've come across. Folks have recommended the Anti-Hate, Anti-Bias Task Force of the Middlesex District Attorney. There's a great group in the Boston area called Essential Partners that does community dialogue guides. I do think we should get some professional support for facilitating things like that, but I am very committed to working on that for whoever wants to participate over the summer. It's not a requirement. I don't, I can understand if you feel frustrated, angry, disappointed, any way you want to feel after this process, but I think it's really important that we follow through with and try to do that, because everybody who was, who has been here tonight has talked to us, which is our job, and given us some very choice words. And you know, that's our job as elected officials, to receive anger when it's warranted, and sometimes even when it's not. But I think that we cannot adjudicate the trauma in this community. We can vote on this paper, we have to, everybody wants to move through that. But we cannot adjudicate or decide whose trauma is more important, whose kids feel the least safe, nor should that ever be our job. The only way that that can happen is if we actually do talk to each other and not just at us. We can't, we cannot resolve this, we all know we can't resolve the situation in Gaza and Israel, but we can't even, we cannot single-handedly resolve the pain in our community either. That actually does take everybody, and it's just up to us to try to hold that space. So that's my commitment. I will be supporting this resolution tonight. I really, I deeply appreciate all of the care and the words that folks have brought. I think that we've done the best we can in a, in a really imperfect process, and I can't wait to see all of you at the hearings next year about how we're going to improve the long-term fiscal outlook of the city as some other core work that the city council will need to be engaged in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counselor Simonelli.
I didn't have any.
What?
I didn't have any.
All right, so, right.
Yeah, I'm off.
Counselor Colon Hayes.
Thank you. So, it's on a different subject, but I'm not going to, you know, grandstand or anything here. What we did tonight was listen to our community.
Just a point of information from Counsel Seega, this is the first time we're speaking on the main motion, so she can speak three times.
So.
Now, it's on the main motion.
Okay, as I was saying, the community voices were heard, and what we did, I don't, you know, there's no yelling or grandstanding. I want to have a couple of things, though, that I heard that were misstated. We do vote on things, just like we were saying about Haiti. We had, we also voted on, we passed the child marriage law, like, we voted on something that was at the state level about child marriage.
That was a law, Counsel. That was a law. Counsel Spatafora.
We did do that, and then, so we do talk about that, and we do listen to our community, and that is what we are here to do. No one's going to be happy about this, and if anyone believes that no one in our community was talking about this or being divided before this resolution came, you are so, so misguided, or you don't listen to your community members, because it was being talked about for months and months and months and months with tons of emails. That is why it was brought to this council, so we could hear from our community and do our job. So, we're doing our job now. We all have different beliefs, and I guess what our job is, I, this is our job, to listen to the people. This is our job. So, I, we did a lot of work on this. We're never going to find language that, you're right, that it's a tough vote. We're never going to find language that everybody's going to be happy, but we did our best. We did our best, and, you know, moved the process forward as it should be. So, and we will be having dialogues. Counselor Taylor also brought that up. We're going to be working together on that in the committee, and doing what we said we were going to do. The engagement part of the committee will be happening now. The resolve, or the resolve that was forwarded to us was to work on language for this resolve, and that's what we did. So, thank you. Obviously, I'll be supporting this with the changes. I appreciate your change, Counsel Condon, and Counsel.
All right. Any further discussion? Counsel O'Malley? One second. Lost my mouse here. All right, there you go. Counsel O'Malley.
So, I just wanted to say that for months, we have been approached by a number of individuals from a thousand different sides, as has been mentioned, and to each and every person I spoke with, I said that the first step that we need to be doing is creating space for people to express themselves through community dialogue in a place, in a setting that they feel safe, where they don't feel like they're going to be harassed or doxxed, and I do not think that we created that environment. We've created an environment where people feel like they are in danger, where people feel like they can, that there are ramifications to what they say. I wish we had done better there. I wish I had done better. I wish I had been able to dedicate the amount of time and effort that was necessary to such an important and difficult conflict. I was hoping that that would have been possible in the Community Engagement Committee, but knowing that we are up against the summer recess, that's just not possible. I do think that there needs to be more engagement. I do not think that we can, I don't think there's been enough community engagement, and it's not just enough to do it individually, one-off, that's necessary, but it also needs to be done collectively as a city and as a council. I want to be clear that the two weeks that we have been waiting was not because we wanted to hear, or needed to hear more gruesome and tragic stories, like, we have a lifetime's worth of tragic stories that have been shared. It was to make sure people felt like they could be heard. All sides of this issue have said that they didn't feel like they were being listened to. When they said, when they saw things happening in other communities, they felt like it was happening like a fly-by-night, it was being shoved down people's throat, there was no real consensus, there was no real thought, and I do not think, while we haven't done anything perfect here, we have done a job to listen. We've taken our time, we've sent it to committee, it was not perfect, we don't have a perfect result. I personally want to share my truths, because they're not entirely within this resolution, but I do think it's important to say that all people have the right to self-determination. That includes Israelis and Palestinians. I believe that both Israel and Palestine have existed since antiquity, exist today, and have a continued right to exist. That is my truth. I hope that we do come to peace, Counsel Condon, in our small part of the world. Thank you.
Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we move to a vote on this, I am continuing to hear a lot of dissension among colleagues, which I think is exactly what I would have expected. This isn't easy, and this is not something that, as I said in my last opportunity to speak, that we're going to refine and refine and suddenly get to something perfect. I think it's going to be imperfect, and there are going to be people that are hurt. What concerns me more is that I think there are going to be people who not only feel invisible and feel unsafe, but who actually will be invisible and will be unsafe in our community. And I think that is a call for us to do the subsequent hard work that comes after this vote. I'm mindful of the fact that a resolve is just that. It is the sense of the council, and when I am thinking about how to vote on this, is it the sense of our council that we want a ceasefire, that we want these hostilities to end? I think that it is. I think, speaking for myself, I want to be able to support something that signals to our community that we understand to the best of our abilities what has gone on here, and what needs to happen moving forward. Nobody up here is an expert in international affairs or politics of the Middle East. Try as we might, I certainly feel like I have basically gone back to school for this issue for the last few months. I've spent so much time reading books that you all have recommended, expanding the library of media outlets that I go to for my information in the interest of finding a broader array of perspectives. Obviously, if this was quick or easy to fix, people at a higher level of government than us would have done so already. There's a reason that this is so complex, and that we're in the situation that we're in right now. This is not going to be fixed by the vote that we take tonight, but as a counselor, particularly as a ward counselor, who represents so many different people, I'm looking at so many of my constituents in the audience right now, and like I said three weeks ago when we talked about this, I know exactly which of you live next door to each other, have kids in school together, are taught by other people in the room, and so on and so forth. As a community, I understand what this vote signifies, but I also need to urge us to not consider at the endpoint of how we talk about this, and how we choose to engage with folks that we disagree with. I think that Counselor Condon actually hit it right on the head. I think that this, for me, is, the resolve here is that we want peace, that we want to recognize the humanity of all in our community, that we want to, I certainly, speaking for myself, want to move forward from the vitriol that I have seen. I don't want to see anything like this ever again. I'm not so naive to think it can't happen again. But I'd like for us to move the question. I am going to support this with some trepidation tonight, not because I think the aim is bad, because I think that the goal that we share up here, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is that we have put in work to hear what folks want, what folks want to have in this to feel heard. There are things missing that people have asked for that we didn't put in. Some of those things I personally said no to. As a co-author of this, I have to take responsibility for that. I'm just one person. I'm doing my best. You've all given me, and so many, hundreds more people watching online, have given all of us so much time to try to get this right. I don't think it's the best that we can do, but it is the paper that we have before us tonight, and I would urge us to take this vote, and again, consider it not the endpoint, but consider it the starting point, and hopefully, we can start to heal some in our community, because this is, this has been really emotionally troubling, not just for us, but for all involved. I've heard from so many people in the community, many of whom don't really even know how to think about the conflict. They just want us to stop working on this at the, to the detriment of other things going on in the city. That is, 5,000 emails aside, that is the opinion that I am hearing more than anything else, is please get back to the day-to-day running of the city and doing what you do best. I don't think this was our, I don't think this is our best. I think this is the best that we can do, and I'm ready to take a vote on the paper.
All right. All right, I guess I'm going to say my word here. One thing, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and everybody who's participated and offered their synagogues, and their Eid celebrations, so that I could learn more. I've learned more about Malden and deep. I learned about people's personal histories, what's going on with their lives now, the pain and grief they have from friends and family. So, some of it is, we understand Malden a little better, and that's tough, because, you know, just the struggle we have in the community is, comes to us. So, thank you for coming out, and it's a struggle for all of us. And I do see constituents, and I, so, we talk about sides, but I just see my neighbors out here. I try not to see the sides out here. I wear this tie, I've always worn it, it's from the United Nations. I've worn it a lot when I go to transportation conferences, because I always thought it was interesting. There's this little boy floating up here in a balloon, and there's all these roads and infrastructure that the community has built, but there's nothing for the kids. And so, I think of that song about where will the children play, or whatever, and I really think of the young man here tonight of, and me, when I was that young, I was bicycling through my community to, back from basketball practice. I came within inches of being struck by a car just trying to cross back to my home. I count my blessings that I am a healthy 64-year-old, but I remember that, and I think it's important. I don't know my vote here tonight is going to make peace in one night. In this community, Malden, I helped change it, the bike trail, it took 20 or 30 years to have that impact, so just, and that was a lot more, you know, not so divisive, but I think that's one thing, we, this is a step towards peace, one way or the other, but it's going to take more than one night and one vote to work towards peace as a community. So, that's what I feel. I mean, I would really hope that we could have more unanimity amongst the council here. I also have learned that I don't believe consensus is always the right thing, because that often favors the extremes. One thing I like about the United Nations, you know, resolution is that it's talking about working towards, you know, a process towards the ceasefire. It takes steps, it takes actions, it takes stopping hostilities, it takes releasing hostages, it takes a commitment to a two-state solution. So, that was really, to me, and I appreciate Counsel McDonald speaking of that in committee, of making sure we anchor if we are voting on a ceasefire, that's the anchor. So, I, you know, I, you know, I will be supporting this. I really think it is, you know, it's imperfect, and we're not going to please everybody, but it is best we can do as a community, and I do like the ideas that, and I will, as Council President, we have resources, if we need to commit some of those resources, just like we had in diversity, to help get some expertise, to take the next steps, so that we can continue to work towards peace as a community, and to make sure that people in Malden feel safe, because that is the joyful thing. I look at my own family history. My family has been in this area of the world for over 400 years. Since, it's been almost 250 years, Malden has had to ever deal with anything like that is happening in Gaza. We've been a generally peaceful place, we have not had war here, we have not had that suffering. We've sent people to wars all over the world, but we have not had that here. So, that we can use our time and our freedoms to speak for peace, that is important, and it's why your ancestors came here from, you know, in every way, and have built the communities you have. So, we committed to peace, to main painting the peace we've had here in Malden, and embracing that, and we want to see that go out, and that's my hope, I say, for the world, that Malden, we have to figure out here, but it's not going to be just one vote, one night. We have to continue. I mean, the fact that we know more about each other, that's the challenge in Palestine and Israel. There's people who are not getting the word that we have gotten here. There are people that, that is not happening. So, we've had that, but that is, I don't, if anybody else has to speak, but otherwise, we will move the question. Thank you very much. So, Clerk will take the role on the main motion.
Ceasefire is not peace.
All right. On the paper, Counsel, Counsel, Counsel Colon Hayes? So, Counsel Colon Hayes makes a motion to adopt the resolution as amended. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor McDonald. Clerk will take the role.
Counselor Colon Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Sadly not.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Abstain.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Abstain.
Counselor Spatafora.
No.
Counselor Taylor. Counsel President Winslow.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
So, you want to report? What's the vote? Please, Clerk, read the vote.
The paper passes six to two with three abstentions.
I'm going to call, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, and then we will return to take up the normal order of business, starting with the, from consent agenda. We will have the executive session at the end. Thank you very much. Can we do personal travel? Yeah, we can do that. All right, what did I, just, it's conference manager. All right. I just hit the wrong button, and then, okay. All right. Here we go. Come on. Let's see.
This whole thing, just put it all in for stuff. I'm not even lying.
All right.
No, I already am.
All right. Oops. All right. I call the meeting back to order, and we will, we're actually going to have the executive session after we get through the other items on the agenda, so we will, we will do that. So we, so next order of business, I guess it's, we're on the consent agenda. So does anybody, has everybody had an opportunity to read the consent agenda?
Yep.
So we have two papers, let's see, how many? We have, all right, so this evening consent, one paper being referred to Waterfront Access Committee, and one paper being referred to Rules and Ordinance. Any objections to that? No objections? Okay. Let's see, so Counselor Crowe, what did, I'm going to go to Counselor Crowe, and then, what, do you have objection or not?
It's not an objection, but I do want to speak on Paper 298.24.
Okay, and then, Counselor O'Malley, did you have an objection on consent?
I don't have an objection. I also wanted to see if we could send 298.24 to the Community Engagement Committee in addition to the Rules and Ordinance, because I believe that's what the paper says.
So that would be, okay, so.
It doesn't have to be joint. I think it could just, I mean, I don't know, it could be joint, it's really up to.
Okay.
Okay, so then we're not passing a consent agenda.
We're not passing a consent agenda, so well, let's take up the papers.
Let's start one at a time.
Yeah, so Paper 297.24.
Paper 297-24, order that the Waterfront Access Committee will meet to discuss ways to increase access to the waterfront, identify opportunities and barriers to waterfront access, and consider potential ordinance amendments to address such barriers. Sponsor Peg Crowe.
All right, Counselor Crowe for the paper.
I just want to refer that to the Waterfront Access Committee.
All right, does anybody want to discuss that? All right, seconded by Counselor Cullen Hayes.
Yes.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that paper's referred to Waterfront Access. Next paper, Clerk.
Paper 298-24, bid ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, 11.08.010, procedure for repair or alteration of streets is hereby amended by adding subsection F as follows. The city will provide transparent, consistent, and predictable public engagement standards for projects that permanently impact the flow of traffic, reduce travel capacity in a material way, or reduce on-street parking in any area zoned for business. The use of the word permanently is defined as any such projects that affect the above noted scenarios for one year or more. The following public engagement process will be implemented and led by the Citizens Engagement and Inclusion Committee, if still applicable, in conjunction with the Department Group of Public Bodies spearheading the project. Alternatively, to the Citizens Engagement and Inclusion Committee, the city council will implement this process. The requirements for such projects will include, one, a minimum of three public meetings will be held to discuss the proposed changes, with one meeting held during the daytime hours, one during the evening hours, and one on a weekend. Number two, full proposed project details must be made available to the public a minimum of 10 days prior to the first public meeting, available online and in hard copy, available for public viewing by the department responsible for the implementation of the project. Three, all public meetings must include a remote participation option. Four, all abudders will be notified via mail with the project details and a full schedule of the upcoming meetings. Five, all meetings Five, all meetings will be advertised in a local newspaper at least one week in advance and publicized on the city's webpage. And social media pages starting two weeks before the first meeting and continuing regularly until the conclusion of the last meeting.
So councillor Spada for you, it looks like you're the lead sponsor. Or do you?
No, go ahead.
You know, the, the reason for this was, there's been some projects that have received certain, I'm going to use the word transparency. They've been very well publicized, there's been others that have not been. I want to have a consistent message there. So this is, my recommendation is to send this to ordinance, we can debate, you don't have that debate there. I don't want to do it here in the, I'm not willing to answer questions, but that's what I want to send to ordinance. Couple of things, I did, I did, I originally had just the citizens engagement committee there. And I just put, if applicable, right, because every president can change that. So I didn't want to put something that could go away. And then the other thing is, I wanted to make sure the process copied some of our other requirements in terms of having the abutters notified. Having some of the projects, but again, happy to discuss any questions, but just want to send to ordinance. Councillor Crowe?
All right, one second. Councillor Crowe? Oh, sorry. One second.
So, you know, I do support this. And one of the precipitating things was really about kind of all the spot pond brook greenway. And as, you know, they had the pop-up meetings. And I know councillor O'Malley has been working on this for years, for years now. And so, but I think they, they had the pop-up meetings, that was fine. And then we, again, it was announced, and I'm sure councillor O'Malley will announce, there's a meeting this Thursday at city hall. But I do think, you know, the notice that's in there, and I agree, you can't have everything in the notice. But if you look on the website and it has just what it, it doesn't really tell you a whole lot of what I'm coming to give, for instance, to. And this is some major changes. And so let me just explain, for anybody that's still watching, maybe not. So the area, they're doing this in segments, but the area they're looking down at right now, that they want input in, is the Dartmouth Street. So most people know where Dartmouth Street is. It goes from Mountain Ave to Pleasant Street. And in between the YMCA and the post office, it's that corridor right there. But the other portion that they're looking on is Middlesex Street. You can ask maybe us, but a lot of people have no idea where Middlesex Street is, or that we have a Middlesex Street. But the section of Middlesex Street that they're looking at is from Exchange Street to Pleasant Street. That little, short little way next to Faces and the ramp that goes to the, goes to the garages. And so one, this is not the only option. This is not the decided on option. There's about four options, I think. And I did get to the tail end of a meeting that they had on the 20th. I mean, it was really for the business community. Unfortunately, one business owner showed up and, but it was really, everyone said they had a great dialogue. Everyone left feeling heard. So I think that was, that was kind of good. Councillor Spada for, was there councillor O'Malley. But one of the options is to close Middlesex Street to vehicular traffic. So that means on Exchange Street, if you're coming down from Commercial Street, you have to go all the way to Main Street. At the light that's already backed up, come around to get to Pleasant Street. So there's no cut through. So there's a few issues with that, but I think that's a major, major change. And on the website, it doesn't have any of these options or schematics. So people don't know what they're coming to comment on. I do think there might be, there got to be a way that we get them that information. So people come out because we always hear, we've been talking about it, we've been talking about it. And then they said, we didn't know about it. So you want to, we want to make sure that we're informing them. Because if that happens, and you know, I do think it'll affect the businesses. And again, that's not the decided on option, but that is one of the options. And before it is, could be the decided on option, that information needs to be out. So I agree with this paper because, but I'm hoping that we're able to give them not just, you know, Pleasant Street and the greenway is vital new place. Destination, meeting point, Gavin plays critical elements of the proposed path. Come see and comment on possible alteration, alternative designs. That doesn't tell me a lot what I'm coming to talk about. So I do think, you know, again, I know that this has been, you know, worked on a real lot. And it kind of now resurging, I know there's lots of moving parts to anything like this. So I think this paper, hopefully, will get the word out in a way that people know what they're coming to a meeting about. Because if you say spot pond brook remake, some people are like, huh, what's that all about? So that's why I'm supportive. But don't forget to come Thursday, there's going to be a very busy Thursday at city hall.
All right, councillor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm happy to have this in committee. I definitely, when I read it on our docket, spot pond brook greenway is what came right to mind. I knew that was part of the driver here. And I will say, I actually agree with what councillor Crowe had shared and had given some of that feedback to the staff that are working on it. Because I do think it was, for whatever reason, it's a little bit of a hurry up, probably just before the summer, right? If there's grants and whatever, not really entirely sure, and it's not important. But some of the things that I saw there was like, you know, inaccessible designs, not translating the materials. There's even more, I think, I guess is what I'm getting at. There's, this is a great start, but I think what I would like to see is for us to build a little bit beyond even what's here. I think this is very specific, and I think the city could benefit from even a little bit more detail in what our expectations are around community engagement. I think it's a great opportunity to bake in language access, or at least to have the expectation that, you know, department heads or whoever's in charge of a project. Have to say, what are the impacted communities and how, what the right outreach method is for that? It could be the mix of meetings that you've identified here. And I'm sorry, I'm just looking at you, I know there's three sponsors. But it could be that there's other approaches too. And so not wanting to limit us, maybe give us some additional tools too. But I think it's a great thing for us to use as a starting point and get into committee. And I'd be happy to co-host with community engagement if that is the hope. But I'm also fine to have it in ordinance and just encourage all councillors to come, you know, and talk about the bigger approach here.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually, I actually, I guess we're getting through something, because I thought this was about Route 60. Not, not to put salt in the wound, but I was, when you said spot pond brook greenway, I was like, oh, I didn't know that. And so to that, yes, while I was the catalyst of the project, I am just a stakeholder now. It has been transitioned in-house to OSPCD. Is that it? First time I got it right. And so the feedback that you've provided, you know, we definitely should make sure we get it to OSPCD. And just to kind of rehash, throughout the life of the project, we've probably had close to six public meetings. When it went through the feasibility study, we also had three public meetings for the 25% design. And when it comes to this final getting to 100% design, you're right, we need to make sure that what we're getting at is what we need. When it comes to Middlesex, I think that we're pretty much all on the same page, that we would like to knock down the ramp and, and take down the decrepit bridge. We've discovered that one of the reasons why shutting down Middlesex might not be possible is that there are actually delivery trucks that cannot get underneath the bridge. And so then they would have to back down Exchange Street. I might be oversimplifying how easy it is to take down a bridge, but I feel like gravity does 90% of the work for you. And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that we can.
Try one of the trucks, maybe it'll do it.
So I'm hoping that we can get up to a better resolution. I am in support of sending this paper to ordinance if possible. I would like to also send it to community engagement because I believe that they will also have a role in what we do here. And I just want to echo what councillor Linehan has said about multimodal transportation, translation, et cetera. So thank you.
All right, councillor McDonald.
I would just know that, I feel like this is why we have a consent agenda, is because once we get into it, then we get into it, you know? The whole point of committee is to get into it. But nonetheless, here we are, so I'll get into it. And I just want to say, I really support the goals here of like some better standards for community engagement. I appreciate the points my colleagues have made, referral makes sense. I also just want to make sure that we're really thinking holistically about the projects we have. When I read this, it felt like the fact that we would have higher standards just for reducing street parking in a business zone is a decision. And I actually think we should have better standards across all kinds of projects. And not sort of say, certain projects, you know, need more scrutiny by the nature of the project. I think there's a lot of needs. Anyways, that's, that's a piece that I also welcome our city staff's input on how this relates to what they currently do. But I look forward to discussion in committee in September. Thank you.
Councillor Spada for him.
Yeah, and I completely agree, and I echo all the thoughts. I think councillor O'Malley was there, when we found out about the bridge, I think we all looked at each other and said, you know, that's, that's, well. I will tell you, councillor O'Malley looked at me in being completely serious, said, you think the DPW could take it down? And I just shook my head. So, you know, I, no, I don't think they can. Anyways, the process, I completely agree councillor McDonald. The reason why is because right now, especially with businesses, there's certain things that, if you take down a tree in front of their business, there's a, there's a, there's a meeting. If you cut a curb cut across from the business, there's a meeting. But if you're going to change your configuration, there's no ordinance or anything that says we have to notify them. And oftentimes too is, what I found out is, the owners might not be there at certain hours, right? As much as we try to use social media and other means, they don't check the mail that often, or the owner gets the mail. So this way sets a standard, it's a little different with businesses, but I agree. Let's set the standard across for all projects, not this, this one. It just, it's a little different when you have businesses. And the other reason was, and I don't think there was any malice, this crossed over two wards. And councillor Crowe, when, when we saw our meeting, I asked councillor Crowe, and she goes, I have no idea. I don't think anybody was hiding that from the fact, but she didn't know, then councillor O'Malley brought her up. So I think it's important too, when you're going over two wards, that at least both councils can be armed with the same information and intelligence. That when a client, when a constituent calls up, we have an idea, okay, this is what's going on. So that was the intel. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Yeah, and I just, I mean, I am a strong believer in community engagement. I've done a lot in Ward 6, both as a councillor in large, and I actually worked with councillor Anderson on something for Willow Street. Where we had a series of community meetings, we went to the traffic commission, we went to the council, we got a lot of support. So I am committed. I do feel that projects are improved by that process. I do agree that this seems somewhat narrowly tailored, and we have a complete streets policy. We should be, in any project that is substantial enough, that should be the standard. We're making sure that we completely engage with the users. And that, that be the standard, that we are trying to engage the public to get their input. And it's not about the change of the road, it's just making sure we get public input and we'll sort that out. But we do have a complete streets policy. And I mean, that's also baked into how roads get designed now. So we just have to be aware that, that. So but, you know, let's have the discussion in committee. I am someone who's committed, I mean, I actually happened to sit down with our transportation planner this morning. I was looking, you know, we're looking at stuff up on Maplewood Highlands area. And, but he, you know, he's putting together a traffic calming plan, a complete streets plan. So that's one of the things we have to think about is, you know, some of this starts at a very global level of what, if you, I don't know if anybody participated in the complete streets plan. But I know initially there was a whole universe of like 40 or 50 projects, and then you distill that down and you come up with some suggestions. There's this whole thing about project concept and preliminary design. And there's a lot of different steps that go into actually designing the road and that type of thing. So, so how we make sure it's best, the reality is, as you're building roads, it's something I've helped do. The sooner you get public input, the better. Because I remember, you know, working on Commercial Street and Corporation Way for Medford. We were literally at 75% design and Mayor McGlynn didn't like the lights. And that suddenly cost tens of thousands of dollars and delayed the project because he wanted antique lights and we wanted, and the project was modern light. So the sooner you can get input, the better. And so, so that's just something we have to be aware of, that there's, there's really great times in transportation projects to get community input. When you have concepts, and there's a point where it's just costing a lot more money and time. So that's what we have to really make sure that we set up processes that make sense in terms of the time and resources of the city. But I think we can work on that and, you know, I hope that. And we also have to figure, I mean, ultimately, under our city charter, the traffic commission, who has responsibility for a lot of decisions about how roads are laid out. So that is something that also to factor in. So, so but let's have the discussion. I always think that community process at the right time and place is, is helpful, that makes things better. And, you know, even tactical urbanism can help make decisions. Seeing something happen in a small way to begin with can get people talking about the bigger things we need to tackle. Thank you, councillor Spada for.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, because I, I heard a couple of things there councillor Windsor, with all due respect. The challenge I have here with that is, I, I know we have complete streets, but the idea is it's not, and I'm not saying councillor O'Malley supports this. When I have a business owner tell me that they spent $15,000 on a traffic study to use their own parking lot in its faces. And they can't use that, right, because of the redesign of Exchange Street, so be it. So that individual now has to get deliveries on Exchange Street, which blocks up traffic, which creates problems for public safety. His other option now is, they can use Middlesex Ave. If we take that option away, all the commercial spots we want to talk about here is gone. So we can talk about complete streets, but the business owners have a right to get deliveries. And if you want to have safe streets, having an 18-wheeler stuck in the middle of Sex Ave is not conducive to a good business environment. And I'm all for having a shared street for Middlesex Ave, but it's not at the expense of shutting that road down for nobody but bicyclists or pedestrians. Because that's going to kill the square. I'll be honest with you, it's going to kill the square. I agree with councillor O'Malley, let's take the bridge down. You want to put a bike lane, a pedestrian lane, I don't think anybody's against that. But the idea that there's a certain point in the design, we're not going to take their input? This gentleman is telling us he is going to die in the city of Malden because he can't get deliveries. And his ability for him to grow is a challenge. Because we are literally taking away any spots for them to do deliveries. And if we don't have a square with deliveries, then let's just call it a day and figure out another way. But, but that's, having input from, from business owners is important to the process.
And I agree, and you know, when we did Dartmouth Street between, between Pleasant and Mountain, we did U. O'Neals. The bike lane also has, allows the mark parking. So I think it is the type of thing that, so I think it is, we do want input and we should be outreaching to abutters and businesses. I think that is a good standard. I think it is that we have to, there's, you know, a good time to do that. And we wouldn't have, Faces wouldn't have that conversation unless we were out there making this commitment. So I just think that that's the type of thing that, that, you know, that's why we have different options. So, but let's, let's move this, the way councillor Crowe's motion to refer to a joint rules and ordinance and community engagement meeting to further this out. Seconded by councillor Taylor. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed that papers refer to a joint committee? So we've done public comment, consent agenda. So we have hearings and motions. Clerk will read the.
Paper 299-24 petition, class 2 Reliance Motor Group LLC, 28 Broadway, Malden, 38 cars. This is a transfer of license.
All right, see, do we have a committee report on this, or is this?
This is not coming out of committee, this is a brand new petition.
All right, so councillor Seeca for the petition? Oh, sorry. Councillor Seeca for the petition.
Hi, good evening, thank you. So this is just a transfer of license. This business has been a class 2 Dallas license for decades. I'm not exactly sure how many, but as long as I can remember, 28 Broadway has been a class 2 Dallas license. I would like to not send this to license committee since we're going to be off for the next two months. And I'd like to make a motion to grant it on the floor this evening so this business can start operating as soon as possible.
All right, so we have the motion, councillor Seeca speaking towards the motion, thank you.
Can I speak on that?
Councillor Semenyan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to just clarify, you know, this is, this is Abe over there at Greenleaf Motors at the corner of Broadway. And it's in the shopping center. And he wants to retire, and he's got another guy that's going to go in there and do the same type of stuff that he, he has done. So that he can give himself some breathing room for the next five years. And we've already reached out to Debbie Burke and her office to look at doing something with affordable housing down the road. So, but for now, he's got to pay his bills and make his mortgage. And, you know, he wants to retire, he's been there for like 30, 40 years. So I told her that he had to hurry up and talk to chairwoman councillor Seeca to make sure that this paper could be voted out on the council tonight. So we wouldn't be waiting on it all summer long. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other councillors want to speak? I did just have a question for councillor Seeca. You know, you being very familiar with the licensing process. I mean, normally, let's say we, we didn't have this time delay. What, what processes would we use? And, I mean, have we reached out to our compliance people or what, what, what the, that? So yeah, so I just. So, yeah. So I just have that question of, are you confident that this, are you confident that the new owner would meet the type of things?
So thank you for that. So I spoke to the compliance guys, everything's all set with this parcel. I spoke to Nelson, the plot plan has been approved by the fire department and the building department, so he is actually good to go. Everything that we would have done in the License Committee, I took the liberty of doing it myself, to make sure that it was all set. And, yeah, he's, he's actually good to go with a new, for those of you that are on License Committee, we had told all our Class Two Dallas that they had to have a new plot plan dated for two thousand twenty-four by August. They actually have already done that, so this is getting approved with a new certified plot plan for that particular parcel, which I, I did have Abe rush to get that done beforehand, because I didn't want to grant something in June, and then come September, have an issue with the plot plan. So it's a brand-new plot plan, it's totally compliant, it's on the up and up with everything. So, again, motion to grant this petition on the floor this evening.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, so we got, second by Counsel Seminelli. So do we need to take the roll on this, clerk?
No.
All right, so all those in favor of granting the, the petition, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the petition is thereby granted. So then, all right, great. Then it's, clerk, what do you, the next paper?
Paper three-hundred dash twenty-four, communication. Chair of the future of the Maplewood Square Committee, Ward Six Counselor Stephen Winslow, forwards the action plan for Maplewood Square that has been developed through an extensive community process, including a community survey and a series of forums and meetings.
All right. So I just, I wanted to make sure this got to the council and on record. So, you know, we had, we, we formed that committee several years ago. It's been meeting, I know Counsel McDonald initially was on the committee, and now Counsel Colon-Hayes and Counsel Taylor, along with some members of the public. So, so we had, you know, three commuter forms, we had the Metro Bridge students from Boston University come. So we, we were going to call it a visioning statement, but it, as we were talking about finalizing, we called it an action plan, which has, we've already taken some steps in terms of, if you've gone through Maplewood Square, you've seen some murals go up by Fortune Corner, we have some flowers. We, we have actually, I've worked with some constituents, and we fall, we formed something called Maplewood Main Streets of Malden, which will sort of take over the work of what was called the Maplewood Association. So we're taking steps, and, you know, it's seven key action steps, you know, some focusing on branding Maplewood Square, so people know where it is, working in beautification projects and other things. I mean, some of the things are more, you know, we talk about looking and doing more community outreach about parking, so we will reach out to businesses. But the Boston University students actually knocked on the doors of all the businesses and heard what their issues are with businesses. You know, we know that there's going to be changes on the bus routes through Maplewood Square, so there needs to be further work, and I'm already starting outreach on that. And, you know, all in all, I mean, we know we're doing a master plan, we're talking about housing. So, so these are actions, there's going to be more community input on all that stuff. This is not, there's no proposal for ordinances, but it's really to, you know, I just wanted to let people know that we've gone through the community process, the committee has voted on actions, and then, you know, we'll be talking in, in the fall about more particular people, actions. But there'll be more community engagement in all these things, consistent with, you know, what we will do in terms of, you know, parking and, and any changes to the street and that type of thing. I'm committed to that, so, but it is just, we got a lot of community feedback, and, you know, this is just to take that moment where we, we got a lot of great input from the students and, and, and the public, and we just do that. So, so that's just basically filing that, and we'll, the committee will go on and take action. So we're looking forward to doing more stuff with Maplewood Square and the area. Thank you. All right, and then next order of business?
We need a motion, a second, and a vote.
Oh, just accept the report.
Placing it on file, yes, please.
All right, so motion by Counsel Seeca to place on file, second by Counsel Colon-Hayes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that report is placed on file. We've already done the committee reports. Let's see. So we have, we have the, can you read the committee report on the public property?
Paper three-oh-two dash twenty-four, committee report. The Standing Committee on Public Property will offer an update on proposed leasing terms for the Bike Kitchen, as described in Order one-eight-five dash twenty-four. The committee will further report on Paper two-five-two, Series of two thousand twenty-four, regarding the small cells petition submitted by Crown Castle, seeking to upgrade wireless facilities on existing utility poles.
So on Counsel McDonald's motion, so you, committee report, second by Counsel O'Malley?
Can I make the report first?
Okay, well, no, let's see.
We're making a motion that they want to hear your report.
All right, so, okay, so that's to hear the.
We might not want to hear it.
That, that's, that's the typical thing we say, receive the report, so. Okay, all right, so, so we, so all those in favor of receiving the report? This allows you to speak on it, so. This, this allows you to speak on it, so. Okay, so all those in favor of receiving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so Counsel McDonald for the committee. So please report. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, I'd love to, but you got to have the, no, make this, I'm getting.
All right, thank you. Well, I learned something just now, because I thought that we received the committee report as, like, here's the committee report, you've received it, I accept it, I put it into the record. But no, the motion to receive the committee report is like to say, and now, here's the committee report. It's like to allow us to present the committee report. Is that right?
Yes.
Well, I learned something.
I think I learned something, too.
All right. So, two things. First, Crown Castle is a telecom provider that submitted a petition to add some small cell antennas. Their proposal did not comply with our existing ordinance, so we agreed on an extension with them for ninety days, which will take us through September, so they can do some more research into what they, you know, what, what they think federal standards are, and ask other questions of our building inspection department, because we can't approve a set of petitions that don't comply with our ordinance. So we agreed to an extension to September, to give us all a little more time. And I will make sure that I send a copy of that written agreement for the record, versus Lisa. Oh, behind it, yeah, I will send that to you. In terms of the Bike Kitchen, folks may remember that we, of course, spent some time talking about this on the floor. We're really trying to make sure that the, you know, this is, that the lease agreement that is used for the Bike Kitchen is a good template and precedent for any future uses of public lands in this kind of a way. And so we had a good conversation in committee. City Solicitor McNeil is going to take that feedback back to structure the, the lease agreement with Bike to the Sea, as the folks who have the Bike Kitchen on this now-accepted city parcel. And we'll send it back to us for any other final comments that folks may want to make over the summer, as well as Counsel Crowe, since it's in her ward. If anyone else wants to see that agreement, you should tell Solicitor McNeil, and then, when she sends it, do not reply all, but in fact, simply reply to her, because we aren't going to be meeting on this over the summer. We've authorized now the city to execute that agreement, so that's our final chance to make sure we got everything right, and, and make sure that we have a, a clear agreement in place that protects the city, protects Bike to the Sea, and protects the public and trust in the property going forward. So thank you for your participation in that.
All right. And so Counsel McDonald, just to clarify, there's no action you need from the council?
There is, that is correct. There is no action needed from the council tonight.
All right. All right, so then, we have table paper, note, we're not taking up the table paper on Fifteen Ferry Street. All right, so then the docket is clear? Would anyone like personal, what? Oh, that's right, no, the docket is not clear. We will, let's go, sorry, it was. All right, so we are going to, to go into executive, okay, go ahead, clerk.
I was just going to say, we're going to vote first, take a vote, and then when we know we're ready to adjourn.
No, we're not going to adjourn, we're going to.
Recede to the call of the president, yeah.
It's in the script. I actually wrote it that way. Before we recess.
All right, so, yeah, that's what we changed. All right, all right. So we.
After we vote.
Right. And then we will say we will not come back after executive session, but we will recess to the call of the president.
Recede, recess to the call of the president.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Paper two-nine-six dash twenty-four. Order that the City Council will vote to go into executive session with counsel for the city regarding the matter of Zerachi and, Zerachi v. the city of Malden, for the purposes of Exemption Three Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, where such discussion in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the city, if so declared by the chair, and if so allowed by the body to admit Maria Luis, Special Assistant to the mayor. Roll call required.
All right, so citing Exemption Three of Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A, wherein discussing Zerishi versus City of Malden in open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the city's litigation position. On Counselor Condon's motion to enter an executive session, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Colon-Hayes?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel Linehan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Seeca?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
Counsel Spatafor?
Yes.
Counsel President Winslow?
Yes, so the council, I will now entertain personal privilege. After personal privilege, we will enter executive session, and we will not reconvene, but we will recess to the call of the counsel president, right? So, all right, so I will recognize people for personal privilege. Counsel Crowe is up first.
Well, sit back, because I got a few papers, I got a few to do.
We always speak wanting personal privilege, don't we?
On three different, five different topics, no. So usually, the last meeting of the, the council, we announce and present the municipal scholarships. And so, in the, if you remember, in the last few years, they, through APPA funding, all students got a scholarship, and we didn't have all of Malden High or whoever here. So, but let me just tell you about the municipal scholarship. It was started in nineteen ninety-seven by then-Counselor-at-Lodge Joan Chason. And the way that we get the money to give out to the, to the students is, actually, it's on your taxes, you can check the box at the top, so probably not the best way to get people to give more money on top of their taxes. But, but we collect that money, and then we, we do, we do have a process that goes out to all Malden residents, not just Malden High School, goes to all the schools, but it's also inclusive of adults. So anyone can, if they're a Malden resident, they've been in the city for two years, they can apply. And so this year, again, since APPA funding is kind of winding down, and didn't have the money to give everybody a scholarship, fifty thousand dollars the administration had put into the municipal scholarship. And, and so we go through painstakingly the, all the applications, and it's really based on extracurricular activities, involvement in the Malden community. They are all anonymous, so they just get assigned a number, so you, you know, you don't pick and choose who you like. But this year, with that fifty thousand dollars, we awarded a hundred applicants, five hundred dollars each. It's a book, it says something, and usually we would have them here, and I can read the names if you'd like. No, I'm kidding. The, but seriously, the, the, the schools that they're attending is just as diverse as the students and, you know, participants that we have. They're going to Bridgewater and Brown and Bunker Hill, and Northeastern and MIT, Suffolk University, just to name a few. So I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you so much to Jeanne McQuado and Alene Sepatelli, who serve on that committee with me, and really, they, they take the bull by the horns, and I appreciate the administration for continuing to try to support our youth and our adults that want to go on to further their education, and our congratulations to all the recipients. Next up, so we'll start with the week ahead. So first, I think I'll have, actually, I'm not yielding my time, but Counsel, I mean, not Counsel, City Clerk Carolyn Desiderio, is, we all got invited to a dedication this Thursday at four P.M., prior to all the meetings happening here at City Hall, to the unveiling of the Lone Star quilt. And it's a quilt that was made by retired City Clerk Karen Anderson. As you know, we lost her, but she was really a gem and a treasure to the city of Malden. And the artwork will be hung outside the office of the City Clerk on the second floor, and just to memorialize Clerk Anderson's years of dedication and service to the citizens of Malden and the state of Massachusetts. So that's really an important one to come to, so they'll have light refreshments, and it really is a way to honor somebody that has really done so much for the city for so, so many years. Four o'clock, four o'clock, so you've got plenty of time, get a little bite, go to Spark Park, Brook Greenway, go to the D.E.I. meeting, you have plenty of things to do. But then on Friday, the twenty, the twenty-eighth, at five P.M., we will be having the town instructions, and usually we do it at the library, but it's going to take place at Belrock's, Belrock Cemetery, which is on the corner of Green Street and Medford Street. So we'll, they'll have the William Diamond Junior Fife and Drum Corps, and they'll have a historian reading, reading the town instructions. And of course, as we said last week, really exciting addition is the unveiling of the memorial installed at Belrock Historical Cemetery, to honor the service of the free and enslaved Black soldiers of Malden who served during the Revolution every war. So I think that's really an important thing, right, with this country, five o'clock. So I hope everyone comes out and participates in that. Let's see what else I've got here. So then we're on to the fourth, the third and fourth of July. Oh, the, and so on the third of July, at Green Street Park, we'll be having movie night. Now, there's no anxiety around this at all, and, because I have a feeling you are going to love the movie. I ordered it, so I'm just hoping it comes, otherwise I'm going to be inside out with, you know, grief. Anyway, so, come on down, we are there from like six-thirty, we have a bounce house, we have a basketball shoot, we have some music going on, we have some games, and lots of fun, and then popcorn and water for the movie, and the movie starts at sundown, so, you know, eight-thirty, eight-forty-five, I hope the sun goes down faster. And then on the fourth of July, we said nine, it's really, things start at nine-thirty. At Dever Park, we have a full day of events. We have pony rides, and bounce houses, and water slides, and races, and we have a fantastic lunch ready for, hot dogs, hamburgers, sausage, peppers and onions, and slush, red, white, and blue, and lots of other fun things. So I hope everyone come on, come on down, and really enjoy the day as a family, together with your community.
All right.
That's it for now.
All right, that's all. Counsel Seeca.
Thank you, Counsel President. Okay, so I, too, am going to start with the Fourth of July. Wood Eight's Annual Independence Day Celebration will be held next Thursday on July fourth, from nine A.M. to twelve P.M. at Linden Park Hunting Field. It is the usual fantastic day of water slides, races, basketball shootouts, doll carriage parade, decorate your bike for a trophy, kind of stuff like that. Boston Burger will be there catering the food once again, and I look forward to seeing everybody that haven't seen it yet on Fourth of July. We, Counsel Spatafor and I have also just launched, I think, today, Tuesday, yesterday, that we will be officially bringing back the Home for the Holidays Street Hockey Tournament at the newly renovated Linden Hockey, Street Hockey Rink on Saturday after Thanksgiving, November thirtieth. This year, we are going to be dedicating that tournament to Sergeant Mike Giordano, who passed away three years ago, and his third year anniversary is actually on December first, so it perfectly aligns with our tournament that weekend. We will also be dedicating that hockey rink to Sergeant Michael Giordano. If anybody is more deserving than him, let me know, because every summer just about that I've been the city councilor, up until his passing three years ago, him and his children have spent down at that street hockey rink, you know, replacing boards, painting, constantly maintaining it. I got the pictures to prove it. Mike was truly amazing. He'd take home the hockey nets and sand them down, and repaint them, and re-net them. He, he truly thought that that rink belonged to him, so I think we should make it official and make it the Sergeant Michael Giordano Memorial Street Hockey Rink. So I hope everybody saves the date for that. I've already been in touch with tons of people, we're hoping to make it the biggest one yet. So just look forward to the information in the upcoming months. But Saturday, November thirtieth, at Linden, we're going to dedicate that hockey rink to the person that it should be dedicated to, and that's Mike. So. And it's his favorite time of year. So, we'll kick off Christmas that morning in some sort of fashion. I haven't quite figured that out yet. But, so, thank you. And then, really quickly, I didn't want to get into this earlier, but Counselor Winslow. I think when you, sitting at the, at the seat of the council president, you should be remaining completely unbiased to any topic that we are discussing as a city council as a whole. And when it's a topic that you feel a certain way, everybody should still be allowed to be able to speak. I didn't appreciate you telling Counselor Simonelli tonight that he needed to stop speaking. I didn't realize that us as council members actually had a time limit on to how long we, we could be speaking. And it, it just seems that if you're going to suggest one thing for a topic that you don't want to listen to, then you need to be suggesting that same, those, that, those same rules when it's a topic that you do want to listen to. So, I know that this three rule, you know, the council members can only speak three times and you tried to enforce it on a time that you didn't want to have a debate over an issue. But when you do want to have a debate over an issue, then you allow it to go on for more and more. So, I would just appreciate if we followed the council rules and we, we allowed everyone to speak the three times that they were supposed to, not four or per question, like the, it, an amendment. I've never heard of that. I just thought it was three times on a particular paper. It, it should be, it should be followed for everything, not just for things that, you know, you may be biased towards. You should be a total neutral ground when you sit in that seat. When I was council president for two years, there was many of things that I didn't, I didn't agree with, but I had to sit there and I had to listen to both sides as a neutral party and allow the members of the side that I didn't agree with to speak. And I never stifled debate on it. So, I would just hope that, you know, with this much-needed recess that I feel like everybody really needs, it's been six months of craziness, I feel like, up here. I think that, you know, we, we should really try to reflect that and, and have the proper decorum moving back in September. Because I, I have to say, for the past six months, I think this might have been the most chaotic and crazy council months I've ever sat up here on the city council. So, I, I, I just hope moving forward come September, I, I, I think we need to stop being a circus and start, you know, really getting back to the business at hand here, because I think we've kind of lost track of that somehow. So, I, I just.
So, quickly, Counselor Sika, respond. If that situation comes up, you're free as a counselor to raise an objection and then, the council can, you know, take a vote on whether what I've said is, you know, foul or not. So, just remember your purpose.
And it was just a little too crazy earlier to, to have a discussion. I, I feel like.
No, I appreciate.
With the room being as full as it was, it might have not have gone to a, a place where I would have wanted it to. So, I decided to wait to personal privilege to have the conversation. But I, I just do hope that, you know, moving forward, I, I honestly don't agree with the city solicitor. I love Ally and all, but I do think that Counselor Spatafora should have been able to make those amendments on that paper. I don't think you should have said anything about it violating an open meeting law. I don't think it violated an open meeting law. He wasn't changing the whole, he wasn't changing the whole meat and potatoes, so to speak, of this resolve. He was only adding a few other areas of the globe to it, kind of like just how Counselor Condon added the word peace.
So, Counselor Sika, like I say, if, if you have that objection going forward, you can always make a motion and the counselor.
Counselor Winslow, I have the floor and this is what I'm talking about. You get so defensive when it's something that you don't agree with. You need to work on that.
I, I, I said, I, I said, after you were done, I was responding. So, whatever, let's go on.
Well, again, maybe the next two months, you can reflect on how you should be handling your little bit of anger, I guess you would call it, because I'm just making a point where I disagree with the city solicitor. And I think that Counselor Spatafora should have been able to make those amendments that I seconded and without you, you know, worried about violating an open meeting law again. And I am gonna look into it tomorrow, because I am just curious if that was in fact an open meeting law. I think we kind of put Ally on the spot. She is new to the position and she may not be completely certain if that was something that we should do. Because I am, I'm pretty positive we have done that before. So, I just wanted to, again, state my little bit of frustration that I've had over the last six months and I didn't think it was my place to do so earlier because of the tension in the room with all the people that were here. So, I just, you know, I hope we can move past it and move on. In the next couple of months, we can have a little time to reflect, because, again, it has been the craziest six months I've ever sat in this year. So, thank you.
All right. So, we have Counselor O'Malley is up next.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to remind the community that Ward Four will be having, our Independence Day Celebration on Saturday, July 6th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's at Quatermally Park, which is the park near the pool on Mount Tenav, near the post office. The pool will be open, the splash pad. Please come on by, hopefully, and praying for nice weather. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Simonelli.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I just wanted to like to thank all the volunteers, Advanced Recovery, Mayor Gary Christians' office, Mayor Kyle D. Maria's office from Everett for letting us use the stage, all my colleagues up here, and so many other people that really helped out with our first annual Health and Wellness Expo at Lincoln Commons. It was, it was a great time. We've had, we had some good, good performers up there that were singing some great songs. The kids were having a great time for themselves. And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot that goes into these activities, as we all know, because we all do something of some sort or another of, of a function. And I'll tell you, this one was, it was, it was hard leading up to it, but, you know, it went off without a hitch and people seemed to enjoy themselves. There were some really great vendors there, some that I haven't seen at all at, at, at these events. They were giving massages out there and they're just doing a lot of good stuff out there. And it was a great way of getting people, you know, out of their houses post-COVID, get them out there, mingling with one another. And that's something that I've been wanting to try and do since I got in office. So, I want to really take my hat off to particularly my son, Joseph, who is what I was 25 years ago. And I don't even know how I kept up back then, because he's all over the place, doing 10 different things at once. But I want to congratulate him on a job well done. And again, I couldn't have done it without all of you and all the help that you guys gave me, from phone calls to taking care of stuff for me, and, and I appreciate it. And secondly, the thing, we're having our Ward Seven, 4th of July festivities on Wednesday, July 3rd. I like to, I like to kind of switch it up. And we're gonna have it at Lincoln Commons, of course. And this time, we're having it at 4:00 in the afternoon till 8:00 at night. And we wanted to try and do it into the, you know, early afternoon lady, then kind of switch it up a little bit. So, you know, once again, we, we intend it to be a really good event. A lot of people have fun. So, come on down, say hello and thank you all for your cooperation. It was a trying, but really good year. And I think we got a lot of good things done. And I want to wish you all a very happy recess this summer. And hopefully, we don't get called back to the chair. We're good. All right? Thank you very much for your cooperation, folks.
All right. And then, Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. I want to again invite folks to our Racial Equity Commission's second Town Hall meeting, which is taking place this Thursday, 6:00 PM, here in City Council Chambers and online. The city's been promoting this online. And we got some great feedback at the first meeting earlier this spring. We're gonna be drilling down on four key areas. First, community development engagement. That includes youth support, learning development, the arts. Second, equity inclusion, including language access, accessibility, affordable housing. Three, third, economic empowerment and business development, such as small business support, recruitment and communication, and overall public safety and well-being. So, really want folks to input. If we have, you know, we had a lot of engagement tonight. And so, I hope some folks are still watching and will be coming down on Thursday to participate in that. And I want to say congratulations to all of my colleagues who are ward counselors, who are, always do such a just amazing job putting together these July 4th and Independence Day events. I know our community really appreciates it. So, I'm happy to support in the ways that I can. You know, I, Counselor Sika's not in this chamber anymore. I just have to say, that felt really harsh. And I feel like we could maybe end on a different note here. And so, I want to appreciate you all in all of your, gosh, it's like a cast of characters. I mean, sometimes I feel like I work in a sitcom, but, you know, I have, I have to, I have to try to enjoy it. And so, I want to appreciate you all for all the hard work that has happened this spring. And also, just ask that we not patronize our city staff. And I hope you have a great summer. I'm done.
Counselor Taylor.
Okay. So, I have a few things. So, I hope you'll bear with me. I, I will try not to be too long. I first want to say thank you to everybody who has come out to paint a pride crosswalk. We have one more going in at the BB School in that area that was requested by their GSA. And we'll have the date for that coming out soon. And just a little history as to why this is so important. I never like to do things that are, are performative or just, you know, for show. But these crosswalks, their visibility really shows our LGBTQ plus community that is, is vulnerable, our students and our elders, as a lot of elderly LGBTQ folks need to go back into the closet to survive when they need care from someone else, that there is a city that supports them. And that is the reason that we do them. So, I'm, I'm really thankful for everybody for coming together and all of the support that they've seen and excited to do more. And I've heard from, from many folks that they really do make a difference and they, they do feel seen. So, that makes me feel good. Second of all, July 4th, both Counselor Winslow and I have joined together to do a Ward Five and Six event. And it'll have bouncy houses, water slides, face painting, a little talent show, pony rides, slush, hamburgers, hot dogs, veggie burgers, and, you know, lots of, lots of fun things. And we'll be there. There'll be a Ward Five versus Ward Six tug of war. He's taller than me. I need help. Please come out and, and, and help with that. And then, third, I just want to say, upon completing my first six months, I want to thank all of the counselors up here and, and the City Hall staff and everybody for, I really feel welcomed and I feel like I've gotten a lot of help, advice, and, and, you know, you've been great helping me navigate these last six months. And I look forward to coming back in the fall with more information. So, thank you all very much.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to give a thank you to people who might have showed up. I don't know who here went to the Juneteenth celebration, but it was just phenomenal. And so, it was, I think we lost count at over 500 folks and we had to quickly move from outside to an inside. And I just want to read a very brief thing that we had sent out to the community of, of a thank you. So, it was, "We're tired and grateful tonight." This was obviously written the day of. What a day. Thank you to the performers, speakers, artists, DJs, sponsors, community partners, vendors, and especially today, our volunteers, who were phenomenal. We are an all-volunteer group and the Malden Juneteenth Freedom Celebration is always a culmination of months of planning and work behind the scenes. And it takes a much larger village of volunteers to pull it off the day of. So many things could go just right and we do our absolute best to persevere and collaborate through the hiccups that challenge us. So, what makes it all worthwhile is you, anybody who came, and the connections that were made, the learning and the fun and the community that was built. And so, we just wanted to thank everybody who joined us that day. It was really something to be witnessed. And then, the next thing would be a very quick, North Shore Hispanic Association. We're having a, going right into the next festival, but we are going into September, Hispanic Heritage Month. And we're, we moved it to Maplewood Square. We're so excited. We're gonna shut down the streets, have it outside, September 21st, from 12:00 to 3:00 at Maplewood Square. Thank you for hosting us. And I just want to wrap up also thanking, I want to thank you for your leadership, Counselor President. I have a different opinion on how that went. So, I just want to thank you. Thank my colleagues also. It's a, we, we just have so many difficult things that go on here and I think we all handle it most of the times with grace. So, thank you all and have a great summer.
Oops. Thank you. So, just a few things. Thank you for Counselor Taylor and the folks from Ward Five and Ward Six that are coming together. As many of you know, Traffin Park is under reconstruction. A lot of, almost done, but it will not be ready by 4th of July and we really need to let the grass grow over the summer. So, the decision was made to, to join together and Counselor Taylor welcomed us in Ward Five. So, we're happy to be working together and taking the best a little bit of Ward Five and Ward Six. And the tug of war is gonna be an interesting type of thing to, to bring back. She'll, I think they'll probably, yeah. So, it'll be interesting for that, but we're gonna have a lot of fun doing that. And, you know, I, I think we're looking forward to that. And then, just also, this Saturday at Salem Wood School, Roosevelt Field, Ward Six School Committee Member, Joe Gray is hosting Caribbean Fest. I believe that starts at 11:00 o'clock and goes till 2:00 or 3:00. So, he's often just does this on his own. And so, come out and hear some music this Saturday there and for that. And then, as I say, we will, we, don't forget, we still have an executive session to do here. And, but then, we, I will, as we go and recess to the call of the council president, I will actually be visiting Malden, England. So, I'll take greetings from the City of Malden to Massachusetts, to the City of Malden, England, is one part of my trip. So, I'm just looking to forward to that and seeing how, how that goes. But gives me some time to reflect on how we do things here and do things there. So, I'm looking forward to that and just sending the word of, you know, making that relationship go forward. You know, I'll be talking to their council president, getting a tour from their city historians. So, looking forward to that. So, but otherwise, let's head into executive session then.